... that we're sort of putting on a list and looking at in our CIP.
So, we have not identified repairs in our CIP. We have identified a few places where we want to put new storm drains in. We haven't had the opportunity to do a comprehensive master plan for our storm drain system in quite some time. That is a priority of the departments to make that happen. So...
And then, are we seeing necessary on storm drains? Or is this sort of a one-off deal?
In my eleven years here with the city, this is a fairly one-off deal. We haven't run into this finding of a corroded and failing pipe.
Did you have something? Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
You said the debris was noticed in the line. Did Monterey Peninsula Engineering, have they been able to get in there and actually see? Because I see in their estimate, they include videoing and...
Right, that work has not been done yet, and so they will do that. We will evaluate the video before we do the slip line. My expectation is that we will have most of the pipe still somewhat structurally sound. That's just my experience that I'm making that on, but that's why I want to do the video. If the video reveals a drastically different condition, then we will stop the work and reevaluate whether a slip line is appropriate. So, it is a two-stage process where we will evaluate what we really have. But I'm anticipating finding a corrugated metal pipe that has rust, maybe some degradation where there's some loss of the pipe, but not a significant amount, that a slip line won't be a feasible fix. And that way, I want to fix it basically all at once. But if we go in there and find that there's no bottom and I have a semi-truck-type hole just waiting to fall in, then we have a much bigger problem and we will react as appropriate.
Okay, and so their estimate of the plus or minus $10,000 for preparation and running the slip line is based on, it's basically just a kind of an estimate on what they think it'll take to prepare the old pipe to accept the new pipe, even though we don't really know what's down there. It could be, you know, full of raccoon condominiums and it might be hard to...
Right. We were able to video about a foot or two of our crew. That was about as far as we could get in. But from what we could see with the flashlight, ten or fifteen feet down, it looks like rubble and sediment. So, we're anticipating they'll be able to jet it clean and then slip line it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam City Attorney, you had something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The resolution approving this item needs to be adopted as an emergency. In order to do it, the conditions that were outlined by our interim engineer are emergency conditions in that if we don't take action now, the pipe is in danger of failing. That is included in an updated resolution outlining all the reasons for that. So, just wanted to remind the public that we are trying to avoid property damage, further damage, potential flooding in this rainy season. So, that is now reflected in the resolution.
All right, Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you elaborating on those points, Mr. Almar. I see that you're requesting, excuse me, I see you're requesting the city move roughly $12,000 from the stormwater state waste discharge fee. I was wondering if you could tell me what funds that account and just help me understand the appropriateness of that allocation.
Correct, sure. That budget item is a fee that we set at the beginning of the year to fund our participation in the Monterey Regional Stormwater Management Program. We've recently finished and been invoiced for that year's participation, and it came in at eighty-seven thousand and some odd dollars. So, I knew I had, but I didn't know that going into the budget year. So, I put in a hundred thousand knowing that that would be sufficient. But the remaining 12,000 was just what was left at that budget estimate at the time. And so, we have sufficient funds to meet that obligation.
We'll take it out to the public. Thank you so much. Public comment is now open. Public comment remains open. Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Bring that back to the council. What is the will of the council?
I move that we approve the contract agreement with Monterey Peninsula Engineering to construct emergency storm drain repairs in the amount of $43,900.
Then probably moved in second. All those in favor use the regular sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right, hearnas ayes have a motion carried unanimously. Or we go to 5B. Adopt a resolution to authorize the city manager or designated to execute a contract with Workbench to prepare the architectural drawings for accessory dwelling units demonstration project and to authorize the use of accessory, successor agency to the redevelopment agency Affordable Housing Fund in amount not to exceed $88,280 for the payment under this contract. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our housing program manager has a presentation.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Willesby and members of the council. This is a resolution to authorize the contract with Workbench to prepare architectural drawings for the accessory dwelling unit demonstration project and authorize use of funds from the housing fund, Affordable Housing Fund, in amount not to exceed $88,280. And ADUs are recognized as a critical form of infill development, offering affordable housing to a diversity of smaller households, from students to young families to people with disabilities and seniors. ADUs can help lower-income homeowners stabilize their income, help improve and stabilize existing neighborhoods, help integrate affordable housing into the larger community, and help senior homeowners age in place. Last week, the city council, acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency, unanimously approved using two properties owned by the successor agency for the development of an ADU demonstration project on Canyon Del Ray. The demonstration will involve rehabilitation of two existing homes on the site, the development of a detached site-built accessory dwelling unit, and the development of a manufactured ADU to be delivered to the site. The selection of the architect, a request for proposals was posted November 13th, and a submission deadline was set for December 12th. A selection committee, Chief Building Official David Little, City Manager Craig Mallon, and Housing Program Manager David Foster. Eight applications were received and interviews were conducted with the top five applicants. Workbench was selected as the best architectural firm for this project. The project's scope of work and the professional service agreement were then negotiated with Workbench. Workbench. Oh, that went away. Workbench was selected. They are a women-owned, a woman-owned architectural and construction company based in Santa Cruz. The design and building of accessory dwelling units is a major focus of their firm. One of the things I think that especially impressed us with their proposal was we were asking that the site-built unit would be a prototype accessory dwelling unit that, once it's completed, could be available then for anybody in the community to use those plans free of charge. And they had great ideas about how to design that in a way that would have a variety of different interior and exterior design and finish material options with an eye towards being user-friendly and efficient. The scope of work will include preparation of schematic and construction drawings for the rehabilitation of the two homes, design of the prototype, a one-bedroom detached ADU, site plans and foundation plans for the proposed manufactured accessory dwelling unit, assistance with the selection of a state-approved manufacturer for the detached ADU that will be delivered to the site, and assistance with demonstration site materials, including a comparison between the site-built and the manufactured ADU. The cost of this project, contract is, has a maximum not to exceed amount of $88,280. Only the prototype ADU work, though, has a fixed contract amount included in the contract. All the other work will be on an hour-by-hour rate with a maximum not to exceed price. We're including in the contract full redesign of the two existing homes, but hopefully, the rehabilitation required for those homes will not be that extensive. Every effort will be made to simplify the rehabilitation work and minimize the need for architecture's involvement in those two rehabilitation units. That's my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foster. Questions from the dials. Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Foster. I see in the contract, Attachment D, Section K talks about ownership of the work product and that all property rights will vest with the city, the end user. So, I just wanted to be explicit that, or rather, in my question, that the city will not run into any kind of copyright issues with the distribution of these plans, that we shall own them outright in perpetuity and can do with them what we wish?
Yeah, it's an interesting thing to ask that of an architect because they are very careful to want to keep the copyright of their products. And actually, two out of the eight applicant submissions were not willing to offer that and said, well, you know, let's negotiate something different. This has been done in other cities. The county of San Diego actually has five or six sets of plans that you can download and use. What you have to do is make sure that every page of the documents state that the city and the architect are not responsible if, you know, in terms of liability if someone else is using those plans. The nice thing is, is that once those have been reviewed and approved by our plan check, then they can, every time they get reviewed again, there won't be any changes made to them other than what's allowed on the plans. And that makes for almost an over-the-counter kind of approval where the plan checkers are really just looking at the site plan and whether or not the setbacks are correct and that kind of thing.
No, that's very valuable. I'm twenty-four days into my plan check, so over-the-counter seems quite attractive.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kispursky.
You mentioned that plans are available over-the-counter in other cities. Why are we not just letting, you know, downloading the city of San Diego's plans and using those?
Well, I think one reason is that theirs are quite large. Some of those are quite large. And they were also, as of January 1st, we've got the new codes that we have to meet. So, these will be built under the new state codes, and they'll be good for three years before they'll have to be updated. It made sense to also build one that will be built right here and that we have a chance to look at and to work carefully with the architect as they're being developed.
And one more question. The actual homes that are already there, if you're saying they don't require extensive upgrades, what do you anticipate being the architectural requirements?
Well, truthfully, we haven't been in there yet. Last week, the council approved spending some pre-development money to survey the land and to enter those homes and to do lead paint and asbestos testing and to look for black mold. And who knows what we'll find? That the one that's been vacant has been boarded up for 10 years. So, that could be extensive work that's needed. Or maybe we'll come in there and say, you know, put in new light bulbs and paint the living room and call it a day. So, the other thing that's at issue there is there is a 10-foot right-of-way from Caltrans on Canyon Del Ray, which may require that we remove the front porch and move that to the side. So, it would, you know, there's a possibility of the architect needing to be involved in looking at those kinds of things. If there's any way to do the rehab without involving the architect, we'll certainly go in that direction.
Okay, and if there is not involvement needed, I assume they don't charge us for the total amount?
Right. Those, other than the fixed rate that's set for the one prototype design, all the rest of it is on an hourly basis that we would agree to ahead of time before they do the work.
Councilmember Campbell. Mayor Porte.
Just to, so the, and I probably got a little confused, and I apologize, but the $88,000, I heard you say. And then I thought you said an hourly rate, but that's not beyond the $88,000, it is?
It's not. It's not beyond that. There's a fixed price, and I think it's about $22,000, something like that, for the detached, site-built, prototype ADU. The rest of that money is there on an hourly basis, and that was kind of a maximum not to exceed number to take care in case we need to do major redesign of the existing buildings or run into other issues as we're designing the site for the manufactured unit.
And my other question is, let's say, I think you said that you can download the plans. Like, I can go to my computer and download them. Could I take those plans to, I don't know, Carmel Valley and bring it to the architect and to Carmel Valley and say, okay, well, here's our plans. And I just saved $20,000 and I'm going to Carmel, or I'm just picking on Carmel Valley because...
You could. You'd have to work with whatever architect. And that's another issue, is an architect, do they want to work with somebody else's plans? And how flexible are they with that? It won't include everything because the site plan has to be custom-built or custom-designed to your specific site. So, that work would need to be done separately. But, yeah, they could be used in almost any other location using state codes and the state accessory dwelling unit requirements.
So, if I live in Paradise, California, and, because there's no homes there, and I downloaded those plans...
They'd start to look like Seaside.
But what I'm saying is we're providing, okay, and I get that. But I'm saying they can just bring that to an architect or somebody over there, and they have plans ready to go. So, there's no ownership of that. We're just providing a good service to anybody that wants to look at those plans without a fee associated with that.
That's right.
Okay? Yeah, public domain, okay. And is that the norm? As you mentioned, San Diego, does San Diego allow you to do that same thing?
San Diego allows that to be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's a norm to that, okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. I was just reviewing packet page 32, Attachment B, as the pricing structure. And I see roughly $25,000 for Design Task 2, Prototype 500-square-foot standalone ADU. I see Phase 5 is not to exceed $6,850 for construction administration.
Yeah.
Can you help me understand why it might cost $7,000 to watch a general contractor build a small house?
It's a good question, and I think the point is that we would be, as we're in construction, if we've got a good contractor that we're working with, there would be very limited need for the architect to be there. So, that's, again, a maximum not to exceed amount. And we would be watching carefully to make sure they're not just coming down every day to see how things are going.
And billing us.
And billing us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. My understanding is this is what the council asks for, and we want architectural plans to be our plans. So, if people in this community want to adopt them in their backyard as an ADU, they, our staff understands where the plans came from. And like you said, every time they look at it, it gets easier and easier for them to stamp them. And then, pretty soon, it's over-the-counter, you know, three-hour type of overview, as long as it's not changed.
Right.
I don't know the exact number, but I know offhand, it's at least 25 other cities in the state that does this thing.
That, oh, not that I'm aware of, but...
I know LA does it. Everybody that's trying to do ADUs just about have their own individual plans. And my point is, you can go on the website and download those plans, but you still have to come to their staff and get them checked to make sure they fit the local code. So, that's, you know, we could have did that, but then, again, that doesn't really do us any good.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I'm with the commitment to, you know, not more than $88,000, but you guys are saying we shouldn't even come close to that. Do you want to get wiggle room? I'm not against it. It makes sense to me. I'm just espousing my views. And then, my last point is, when you said, I guess I'm telling the city manager, when it was said, you know, we probably look at one of those homes and more than likely, we just change the light bulbs and that'd be it. I know you do, it's just, you know, tongue-in-cheek, but I'm saying right now, I don't think that's going to be the case. Those things, those homes need to be rehabbed and they need to be rung up to standards, today's standards, not 1952 when they were built. So, it may have to be some walls moved out of the way because the way people moved, the way they lived 40 years ago is not the same. And then, I already knew, you don't know if the back door, the side door, is directly facing the ADU. Or, you know, the window to the kitchen is directly in front of the ADU unit. So, it's things that architects will have to look at to change. So, my expectation is to bring them up to what we would want to live in, some type of current inside of plan.
Yeah.
And so...
And I didn't mean to make light of that, but...
No, you didn't, but when you did, I had to be clear in expectations with the community, which is, no, we're going to bring them up to a standard that we expect people to live in and be comfortable in. And if that takes a couple of hours, then that's fine. Those units will continue to be rentable and they will pay back themselves over time.
Right.
Okay, this is an investment. So, I know you didn't mean it that way, but I wanted to be clear. My expectations is it may be some, a need for the architect to redraw the walkability of the interior. Thank you so much. We'll take it out to the public. Open it for public comment. Public comment is now open.
Ray Reardon, live in Seaside. The question I have is, why Workbench? Is it because it's woman-owned? There was five others that were considered. Why aren't we spending the money in Seaside? I think there, we have a few contractors here, don't we, or architects? And I think we should table a little bit and ask a little bit more input. I know it was November to December or something, but, you know, it's over the holidays, things like that. Let's put the money back in Seaside and make that happen. Because Santa Cruz, I don't know of them ever giving us anything except hardship and charging us for their beaches and their parking and all of that. So, let's spend our money here. And are we in that big of a rush for this? That we can't wait for another 30 days to do this? I would think you would nod to the policeman to talk to them about talking while I'm talking, please.
I would ask you to address the council.
But I'm just saying.
If she were to interrupt you again, I would have said something, so you just...
But I'm just saying. I learned my lesson. But anyway, back to the point.
Thank you.
I would like to ask that because if you need names, I have friends that are architects. That would be glad to do it. And also, how did we choose Workbench? Is it because they're just women-owned? Were they the cheapest dirt person, company to put the bid in? I mean, it isn't always the cheapest that does us the best. We all know that from working on our own homes and doing cheap ways of doing things. So, that's all I got. And last, but anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would ask that people in the audience be respectful of the speaker at the podium. Even if you disagree, be respectful, please. Come on down. Public comment remains open.
Hello, my name is Josephine Guerrero. I just don't understand why the city would want to spend something, this amount, for architectural work for the city to invest in it when we haven't gone and checked other possibilities of housing. I ran across this thing over at the Martha Luther King Celebration, and it's called Gary's Tiny House. And it's about these little houses that's manufactured, and they can be brought onto somebody's property or regular property and put on wheels. And it's, there's one on, at the corner of Broadway and Del Monte in the empty parking car lot of, it used to be DeMayo's Car Lot. And there's a tiny home there that people can look at. And this, I think this should be considered as one of the possibilities of the homes that we can construct for the homeless in the city. And it's at the corner of Broadway and Del Monte and the old car lot of DeMayo's Car Lot. And it's in the back, and it's a housing, a little tiny house. And I think we should check into this before we really, you know, commit ourselves on an architectural commitment for housing. Thank you.
Hi, Kate Mulligan here. I have a request for some form of class or group, group where we can get together and talk about the money. Because I'm very confused as to where this $40,000 is being placed. Was that part of the $88,000? And we pay that back when we sell the property? I kind of need to run these numbers because right now, the way I'm surviving is with Airbnb. And I can, if I buy, if I create this ADU and then I have a family move into my three-bedroom, one-bath, will that help me to, because I don't have a job. I'm not going to get a job. I'm 60, 70 years old, and I've already given up on looking for them. So, I've been self-promoting myself with this Airbnb. How do I make the numbers work so that I can still stay? Or do I stay in my big house and then rent two rooms out to students? So, I'm kind of looking for some guidance. And I think if we could have some classes along those lines to help us see where the money is coming from, what we're responsible for, and how we're going to make the dynamics work for each individual. That's just a suggestion. Okay, thank you.
Public comment remains open.
My name is Sylvia Shi. I live in Seaside. I actually want to compliment the city council for embarking on this project. I think it's delightful that we will have some sample to look at. And I understand, at the same time, the city is going to modify some of the cost involved in getting an ADU unit on the property. And I would like to understand that a little bit more in the future. And I also have some questions as to the flexible part of this contract. If we go on paying by the hours and by the end of the top dollar, the $88,000, is reached, we still haven't been able to recondition or to repair what's on the property? What do we do? Or is it a promise that they will get it finished regardless?
Public comment remains open.
Anthony Teresol. First, I want to commend, uh, the city for doing this. It's, it's really quite progressive. And I wanted to illuminate somewhat the comment about the tiny home. I'm pretty familiar with it because, uh, my mother's property is where it's sitting. And the man who's building it, Gary Tuitt, came to me because he was losing his other place and needed a place to build it. So it's, it's not being resided in, but he's building it. And I think it's actually complimentary to your effort because it's a manufactured home. And, uh, as, as I understand it, and I wish he was here tonight so he could talk to it, I believe it will be state-certified. I know he's pursuing that. And so I think it's a complimentary effort, uh, as an example of a manufactured home. And I know he's planning, uh, to use it for vet housing and to also allow unemployed vets to learn the skills to build them themselves. So I think it's, it's quite good. Regarding the plans, I think the mayor spoke to it. The advantage of taking the city's plans versus the ones from San Diego or Encinitas is that your planning department will be familiar with those. And the disadvantage for someone using your plans somewhere else is that their planning department will be unfamiliar with those. I know Encinitas, as an example, has hired two architects and they have a set of four ADUs per architect of different sizes, a studio one, a two, three-bedroom that are available for download. So it's sort of a similar program. And then lastly, I would say, uh, I've got many friends who are architects and I think they really earn their money, uh, doing the supervisory aspect of looking after the contractors and dealing with, uh, making sure that they're compliant with city codes and all those types of things. So thank you.
Thank you. Public comment remains open.
Wanda Parent, I live in Seaside. Tony, who just spoke, is my nephew. I hadn't planned to come, but I want to give you this because the gentleman who built that tiny house, I think Seaside needs him. The house, I went tonight and saw it, it's gorgeous. You might not associate it with this, but don't lose him. Go and see the house. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment remains open.
Good evening. Joy Colangelo. I'd also like to wholeheartedly commend you. I think it's very progressive. Gavin Newsom would be so proud. And I think the intent of this entire ordinance and his, his law is that cities need to play catch-up, that, um, that we need housing in California and this is how we're going to get it. We need to increase our density. We need to get, um, um, houses that, like in Vancouver, it is mandatory to put in an ADU. In Seattle, it's going to be mandatory to, when you're building a new home, that you have to put in a foundation for an ADU. So people are, um, you know, really being seduced by this idea of getting more Californians' cheap homes. And the idea, I think, of using this business that already has expertise in tiny homes and ADUs, that you're cutting a lot of short, you're getting rid of a lot of hassles using this, um, this, this company from Santa Cruz. And I would also like to say, to remind everybody that you can't have a short-term rental in an ADU or live in your ADU and rent your home as a short-term rental. Because the intent is, is to have cheaper housing for, um, for people. And that when you put the plans online, it again allows the city to play catch-up and reduce all of those costs to citizens that wouldn't have to pay for architectural plans. And that is one way to kind of make up for lost time in that, uh, our cities didn't have ordinances before our state did. Thank you.
Public comment remains open. Seeing no one else, public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dice. Mr. City Manager, do you hear any, uh, questions that you can answer at this time? I, I think I can answer all of them. Um, I'm going to start with the simplest one. The, what happens if, if the work, if the architect has to work more than the 88,000? That's their problem. They, they... We have a scope of work that they have to complete. What about, what, no, not 88,000. What is, the architect is, what, about 30, 24? Not, they're not going to get close to 88, the architect. We're, we're designing four projects effectively. So, so, so this is the professional services fee for the full scope of work, for rehabbing both dwellings that the city currently owns and building, designing, uh, a stick-built ADU and then specking, really, investigating and specifying which of the manufactured ADUs will be, uh, placed on one of the two lots. So that's the full scope of the work. And if that full scope of the work, uh, is above that number, the city doesn't pay one extra penny. They have to do all of the work that's specified. Okay. Okay. I thought that was the easiest of, of the four. Okay. And I'm going to try to tie the three, the other three together. Okay. Why are we doing this, was a question. Um, we're doing this because there's a housing crisis in California. There's a housing crisis in, in the city of Seaside. And the city council, uh, at budget time, decided to do something about that. Decided to, to have a fairly extensive and progressive ADU program. One of the things that we're doing is we are creating, we're doing a demonstration project, a series of, really, four projects, um, that people will be able to walk through and see and, and will tell them how much that one costs and how long did it take to go from, you know, first idea through design, through construction versus the manufactured one. And some people think the manufactured one must win because it's built somewhere in a factory, but those things have lag times and, you know, who knows? So we're going to go do this and you're going to get to go watch it. You're going to get to watch it on, on a very, you know, heavily-traveled street in a place where we're going to put in a little gravel parking lot and you just go get to go see it. So this idea of a class, uh, when we are done with this, it will be public knowledge, how, you know, what the different approaches, pros and cons of the different approaches. So, so that's why we're doing it. And, and there will be a vast amount of public information on, on how successful, uh, we are in whatever lessons we learn so that our citizens get the benefit of all that. So I think I tied together why this in the class. And then why Workbench? I was just one of the three people, uh, who, who sat in on the interviews. They were clearly, uh, the best suited for this work. They, they, they have quite a bit of, not just, uh, experience, but enthusiasm for this set of work, accessory dwelling units. We interviewed everyone who had any connection to Seaside, always happy to, um, to build, uh, the businesses in Seaside. We hope that through the, uh, the contracting of this, there'll be, you know, Seaside, uh, folks helping construct these. Um, that we had, we had a very open, uh, interview process. We had eight firms, including Skidmore, Owings and Merrill, which is maybe the largest architectural firm in, in the nation. They didn't even get an interview. Because the, the five who got interviews were either Seaside-related or had demonstrable experience and enthusiasm for accessory dwelling units. So that's how we got to the five. And I just sort of sat in on the interview. Then Workbench was clearly the winner for my vantage point, adding the most value for the citizens of Seaside. And, and I just, I suspect our housing program manager and a building official had the same viewpoint. I didn't actually check with them. I just told them, pick whoever you think is best. It turned out they picked the ones that I, that I thought was best. We didn't even have the conversation. Okay. I'll just follow that up to, to say, you know, we're going to always, the reviewing teams are always going to pick the best, responsible applicant. We don't want to necessarily take in where their business address is. Matter of fact, it may border on illegal. And then you have to ask yourself, how do businesses in our community feel if they are bidding in another community and that community does the same thing? So we have to be careful when we say that. We just have to pick the best one. Uh, I know Seaside has excellent architects and construction firms. Then someone talked about, uh, tiny homes. This does not say, Seaside is not encouraging people to do, uh, the so-called tiny homes on their property. This is just one of the strategies we're using, uh, to encourage ADUs. And to do that, we have to show people that have the space in their backyard that it can be done. And then if they're willing to use these plans, uh, they can use these plans without a lot of, um, oversight, so to speak, from the city staff. It's, it's best that we have plans because, uh, back to, if someone took plans off of the website or some other community, uh, they still will have to submit architectural check plans to the city. So that means you still got to hire your own architect. And I guarantee you, they're going to want to check the numbers to their plan. Right? So I don't know how much cheaper that would be because I, you know, if they sign off on the numbers, that means they check the numbers. So they're probably going to charge you the same. You know, I just throw that out there. And then someone did talk about classes. I, I know, uh, you know, going down the road, it may be something as we talk about, towards the end of the demonstrative project, which is, um, laying out more information about what the cost is along with the plans and how, uh, it can fit all of these different areas we wanted to fit. We wanted to fit that, uh, um, that elder couple or somebody living by themselves that don't need them, them two bedrooms, three bedrooms. They want to move in the back or they want more kids in the back. You know, that's what this is about. And so there'd be a, there, there should be a way for us to continue to talk about that. But that's the object of this, um, project is for us to have plans. And like the city manager said, um, the 88 is really to overlook all four, um, rehabbing of the two existing, um, units and then, uh, the two ADUs in the back and making them fit right and form right. Uh, and then my understanding is, um, they're designed in the ADU, so to speak, but it, you could be, it could be modified. And so that's part of it too. Not just one plan, uh, they're going to integrate modifications. Correct. Okay, so we'll probably get more than one plan. Well, we'll have a plan that has options, uh, built within it. Okay. Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Wizard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, I think it's a good deal for the city to be able to, uh, own the copyright to architectural plans for $25,000 and, and to get those architectural plans. Usually, a universal copyright is, is a very expensive right to buy from a creative individual. And then I would say that, you know, as we revisit our, um, our fee structure, I think that there's room to have a conversation around, um, lowering the plan check fee for our own plans. Because we don't need our planners to spend days reviewing the plans that continuously get submitted because they're not going to change. And as long as the homeowner doesn't change the plans, how much time do we need to approve a thing we just approved last week? That's exactly the same. So we may be able to continue to cut those costs for the homeowners to incentivize without actually losing money because they're not going to spend three or four or eight days reviewing the plans that are their, their own plans. So I know that that would be a, a good way to continue to lower the barrier to entry to, to get the more housing built in our community after, uh, this council decided to, um, eliminate, uh, building permit fees. So just one more way to, to prime the pump, as it were. The last thing I wanted to say, just, I don't know, uh, how, how much detail the public was able to, to glean from the attachments, um, but, uh, it, in the plans, the architect proposed, uh, building the site-built ADU, uh, with an all-electric design. And so with California Building Code from 2019, uh, which was adopted in 2020, and mandating solar power for all new residential homes, the utility bill for this home will be close to nothing because the solar panels will pay for the electricity and there is no gas. So, um, you know, we're trying to find ways to increase our, our climate resiliency. They've also talked about, uh, rainwater catchment system. We're trying to find ways to reduce costs, particularly for lower-income families where the utilities are factored in to the affordable rate payment that they can afford, uh, through the different, uh, government regulations. So if you can only pay 30% of your income, but your gas bill's $100 every month, that's $100 you can't put toward rent, which is $100 that, you know, the property manager or owner can't charge for that rent. So the more we can do to reduce those utility costs and the, uh, HOA fees and other things like that, the better. So I just wanted to thank the staff for putting together such a good presentation and, um, a proposal for us to get this project started.
Councilmember Kispersky.
Yeah, I, uh, very much am, am impressed with the proposals. And I think I am looking for two things as a result of this. I'm looking for, obviously, the plans that we can make available to citizens, but also that it does serve as a demonstrative thing. And we talked about this last time and, and it sounded like that. The exact way in which it will be a demonstrative project is not quite clear yet, but, you know, it would be, for example, I would enjoy, uh, being able to see, they, they put up cameras on construction sites now and you can see sort of a, a two-minute video of, of the whole house being built, right? Or, um, yeah, or making it available to the public to, to watch something that seems to be useful. Maybe there is a day when we go and demonstrate something. But it, but it does feel like that is, this is an opportunity for us to, to make the public aware of and involved in, um, the ways in which we are learning what, uh, how to build ADUs. So I, I, uh, I think we should take that opportunity seriously.
Are you, are you saying you would like to have a camera up there or something like that?
Absolutely.
Okay. What the, what the associated cost? See, see?
I want it free.
Oh. I, I think the city manager could add that into the...
I'll remember a certain fee.
Into the, uh, into the cost, so, uh, staff has that. Because I, I think it's a great idea. You know, we all like to see that. But also like, uh, you know, what the city manager said was, the public, you know, before work or after work, you'll be able to pull them into a little parking lot and walk over there as long as it's safe to do so. You know, that's the demonstration because one, you know, one day it's not there and two months later, two and a half months later, something is standing there. And I think some folks really can envision the ADU being in their backyard until they actually walk around one and see the footprint, in a sense, you know? And that's part of the demonstration. So is there anybody else? Uh, Mayor Pochettino.
Approximately a year ago in our strategic planning meeting, I believe affordable housing in different forms was brought forward. Uh, it's, it's, everything takes a process and this is part of that process. I think in an upcoming month, you'll see a wide variety of other things that will be brought forward to provide the sensory service so people can afford to live on the peninsula and in Seaside in particular. Staff and the city manager and the council, there's a lot of credit for being progressive. Uh, I'm not sure this is appropriate, but I think it says a lot about the city. Not only are they the best firm, but they're a well-known firm. And again, it's about Seaside being progressive and, and acting accordingly. And I think that's important. I believe that, um, that the last meeting we talked about this, you were going to have some open houses as part of this process. So there will be times when the community can see what's going on so it's not going to be the finished product. So I think the goal, as I recall, was to ensure that the public is aware so that way potentially we can do more of these down the road. And by your involvement and the community's involvement, we can, uh, hopefully make that happen for you. So everybody serves a lot of credit and thank the community and the residents and staff for doing an excellent job. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
I'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. We adopt a resolution to authorize city manager for, or designate to execute a contract with Workbench to prepare the architectural drawings for the accessory dwelling unit demonstration project and to authorize the use of successor agency to the redevelopment agency Affordable Housing Fund in an amount not to exceed $88,280 for payments under this contract.
Second.
So you probably moved to second on a question. All those in favor who's direct a sign of vote, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right. Here and now, ayes have a motion carried unanimously. We'll go to item number six, which is a study session, a short-term rental program review. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our assistant city manager has compressed a great amount of information into an eight-slide presentation, which she will deliver probably 10 minutes or so, would be my guess.
We'll see about that. Good evening. My name is Leslie Milton. I'm the assistant city manager. And on that point, I do have to say, sitting three feet away and watching presentations for a number of years, it is a lot different from that perspective. And sometimes it's very easy to overshare when you're up here, so I will try to keep it as concise as possible. So tonight, we're going to be talking, providing an update on our short-term rental program. We want to talk about, so this program has been in place since 2018, the end of 2018. So it's about 18 months old. And as with a lot of new programs, as you build and start them, you realize you could do things better, you can do things more efficiently, you could do things more responsibly. So tonight, we're going to talk about a few changes that we are considering doing and we'd like your direction on this to make it a little bit more user-friendly for both our short-term rental operators as well as the renters and more efficient by the city. So just a brief background, it was, we adopted two ordinances in 2018, ordinance 1053 and 1054, one establishing the provisions for licensing and one establishing the rules of how we share and distribute the TOT taxes. We'll get to that a little bit later. Some of the principles that was really important to the council at the time was preserving neighborhood compatibility and preserving affordable home availability. So they did, you did put in place the regulation that no one could operate a short-term rental if they had not already currently been operating prior to April 10th, 2018. So to date, here's a little bit of status of our licensing process. We have 55 licensed short-term rentals as of December 31st, and we have 27 applications that are still in process. The process is not on paper. It looks like a very three-easy-step process. Some of our applicants and licensees may disagree with that process, but essentially you do have the ability to apply online or in person here at City Hall. With that, there's some regulations that you have to include, including a site plan, a pre-inspection check sheet. You're required to obtain a Seaside business license and then pass that site inspection. If you complete all three of these things, you get your short-term rental license. So about six weeks ago, I was lucky enough to be assigned to kind of check out this program and see where we can operate it a little bit more efficiently. These are three of the main areas that I focused on in looking at program improvements. So inspections, it looked like a lot of our applications were being held up in the inspection process and I wanted to see what that looked like. We do facilitate the inspections in-house through our building and code enforcement department. There is a $271 fee and we do this as a way to protect all of our, not only the homeowner who is operating their home as a business, but also the renter that comes in to ensure that there's a level of safety for the existing dwelling. We require all of our businesses to follow this and we require them to do it annually. So the next site that we, element we looked at was complaints. That was really important to the council to make sure that we were preserving that neighborhood compatibility and this was not impacting the other homeowners and renters in the area. So we established a 24-hour telephone hotline, so anyone could call in if they had any complaints or issues. We created an online anonymous reporting system as well as mandating that it be posted a 24-hour emergency contact for any of the short-term rentals. If there ever was a problem, anyone could be able to contact someone to rectify the situation. We had only a few complaints and the complaints were all investigated, every single one of them, and they were found to be consistent with a lot of smaller condensed housing areas. So noise, parking, things that we actually hear normally in our neighborhood. So none of the complaints that we found tended to be extraneous or excessive. And the last one is enforcement. Enforcement is something that we are still working on. We were working on trying to develop the licensing process and getting that going. We have been actively developing our enforcement program. For the last six months, we've been targeting getting people through the process before we started the enforcement. And as of January of this year, we have started actively enforcing those that are operating and advertising without even applying for a license. So one of the other areas that we, something, here's just a personal experience that I wanted to share with you that kind of stemmed from this. I recently was, a few months ago, I was looking for a short-term rental for my sister. And I went online and I looked through all the different short-term rental sites that you can find vacation rentals on, and they, most of them, many of them look legitimate. You can go on Airbnb, you can go on VRBO, but there are also other places where people advertise these, such as Craigslist. And there was a listing that I saw on multiple websites and I contacted the person and they texted me and we went back and forth about details and everything seemed great and I almost gave them my bank account number and I almost did it. And something in my mind was like, I don't know, there was a little red flag. And so I went to the city's website and I'm like, well, it has to be a licensed program. So I went to the city's website and sure enough, on that website, they had the listing of all of the short-term rentals that were available in the city. They had a listing of all of the license numbers for each one of them and the 24-hour emergency contact. So I called the 24-hour emergency contact and they said, oh, I don't have anyone that's managing my properties with that name. This is the fourth time this week that I've gotten that report and people have been scammed. So that made me start to be concerned, not only with the applicants and the people that are operating the short-term rentals, but the renters. They're coming to Seaside. We do not want to give them a bad experience here. If they are getting scammed by people, that leaves a bad experience and they remember that for Seaside. So I don't want that reflection to be on us. And one way that we as a city can help with that is making more information more robust on our website. So we've actively put up a map of all of the short-term rentals that are approved. It'll be updated every time we get a new one. We will be including the license information and the 24-hour contact information for every one of them. We have recently upgraded our, this web-based platform that we have purchased. It's called STR Helper, which it was initially contracted with just for compliance and enforcement. But this new, we migrated it over. It's taken a lot of work, but this is going to integrate a fully online application process. When you apply, you can also pay your online, pay your transient occupancy tax online. And what that does is that links it directly to your property address, that links directly to our finance system, which links directly to our code enforcement system and to all of the advertisements that are being collected every three days. So the system itself is smart enough to realize that you're advertising. It'll link it to your license number and know you're in compliance. It will know that you've paid your short-term rental tax. It will remind you that your business license is due and your renewal application is due. Our city attorney's office can go in and look at any kind of enforcement. All the records are all in one place. So that's the aspect of the internal, this is how it's going to benefit everybody internally. This program runs out of five different departments. And for the last 18 months, those five different departments haven't been communicating with each other and they didn't have access to the same files. So code enforcement, finance, building department, city attorney's office, no one had the same exact files, which made it very challenging and cumbersome when someone came to the counter and wanted to pull their application or ask a question or, and it just was incredibly inefficient. So we have resolved all of that and it's going to be much more efficient and effective and hopefully helpful. So now we're going to move on to the finances. For, and I have these split up by fiscal years, January, or January through June of 2019, the total number of TOT collected was 44,645. And in July through December 2019 was 146,794. It's roughly $190,000 collected in the last calendar year. It does look tremendously disproportionate. That's just because when we collect revenue after, after the fiscal year starts, it has to be recorded in that fiscal year. There were payments that were made for several months, maybe, you know, April, May, and June, but it's all being recorded in July. So that's why it's a little bit of an imbalance. But our ordinance states that 50% of all of the TOT revenue goes to our neighborhood improvement program to be decided and make recommendations made by our neighborhood improvement commission, and 50% goes to our affordable housing fund. So that's almost $200,000 in additional revenue we did not have last year. So that's great. And we talk about program costs. Here are some of the program costs that we have. We have hard costs, which include the, that online platform. We have costs of printing. We're going to start printing the Good Neighbor brochures as an assistance for our short-term rental operators. And there's a copy of the new brochure in the packet if you want to see it. Right now, we are currently absorbing a 3% processing fee on any online applications that are made with a credit, online payments made with a credit card. That's a cost that the city's been absorbing up to this point. And then there's other operational and administrative costs, such as when we send certified letters and we print out anything, other kinds of things. Staffing, these are the five different departments that operate. And then, so that's, these are the city costs up on the top and the bottom cost, the applicant cost. Currently, applicants have to pay a business license of $56.60 approximately. It depends on the amount of revenue you're going to be receiving and it's in our fee schedule. And then there's the inspection fee of $271, which pays exclusively for the cost of the inspection fee. And that's the same that we charge for typical businesses. This is not a separate one. So this is what the program budget looks like. You have your program costs, the hard costs that we talked about over here. This is the approximate staff costs, but this does not include the staffing for the inspector, because that one's separate. Here, the inspection revenues come here and that's what pays for the inspection costs. And then here are the TOT collection revenues. So the entire goal that you guys expressed, well, not the entire goal, two of the main goals that you expressed was making it a self-sustaining program and that it would have a community benefit. So looking at this program, we have no funds. The city is not obtaining any funds to pay for any of these program costs or any of these staff costs. So this is a policy question to you. Do you, right now, we have 100% of this TOT collection allocated toward the neighborhood improvement program and then 50% to the affordable housing program. Nothing that takes care of these costs. So the program is not self-sustaining. So that being said, after we've looked through the whole program, we've looked at all different areas, these are the six recommendations that we would hope you would consider. And we're not going to do these tonight. You'll perdivide the recommendation. A lot of these are ordinance changes, so we would bring that back to you and we'd have a full public hearing. So we'd like to explain these to you. We'd also like to hear from the public what works for them, what doesn't work for them. So the first one is a formal prohibition on the use of ADUs, the accessory dwelling units we just heard about, as short-term rentals. So we would like to put that on the books. I understand that there are some other regulations, but that's one that we'd like to make. What's been successful in other cities is allowing property managers to apply because they are facilitating the program, but making sure that they do have, because currently it just says only the owners can apply. So it makes it a little bit more operational, operationally efficient if the property managers can apply because they would be your point of contact. But we'd still want it to be with consent of the property owner. Going back to why we have so many applications in process, some of these applications have been in process six months, eight months, almost a year because they can't pass their inspections. We're having a problem with staff because, no, it's not a problem with staff. Staff is having a challenge because they said you need to make these corrections. These corrections need to be made before we'll grant you your license, but some of the operators are continuing to operate. They're continuing, some of them are paying their TOT, but they're operating without a license. So we wanted to incentivize them to complete the inspection process. If we limit the process to 45 days, that, if, and if they exceed the 45 days, they have to reapply, which means they have to repay their fees. If there's something that's excessive and it's going to take more than 45 days, there's administrative ability to extend that. But as a blanket rule, we can say, application processes, applications expire after 45 days if you've not come into compliance. Another way to encourage that is also incurring late penalties. Like if we, if we change it to, these two are kind of linked together. So the next one is changing to a rolling application cycle. Currently, the way that the ordinance is written, and I know this has caused a lot of consternation and confusion on behalf of both the city as well as the operators, is the ordinance says the applications have to be renewed every year on January 1st. So that's become problematic for anybody who applied and was approved in May, because then come, sorry, I said July 1st. If they apply in May, come July 1st, they had to reapply and repay all of their fees again. They did not get a full 12 months of operation. And that seemed unfair, but that's how the ordinance was written, so that's how we had to enforce it. So we're recommending that you change it to a rolling application cycle. We're also suggesting that if you don't reapply and you're still continuing to operate and if you pass your expiration date, you're going to get a late penalty. So these are ways that we don't have to do active enforcement. People are a little bit more responsible to take care of their own application process. This is similar to what we do for our business licenses. The last one, or the last two, making the program more fiscally sustainable. So that was one of your requirements and some of the suggestions, and we'd like some policy direction on this, is either in order to balance what we saw here on the finances, you could either add a permit fee, because currently you'll see that the applicant cost is the inspection fee and the business license. You could add a permit fee to that to cover the majority of these operating costs. Or you could allow us to use a portion of the TOT revenues up to a specific percentage, potentially maybe 10%, to use that to cover the cost of the administration. So that's one recommendation. And then the last one is allocating funds post-close of the fiscal year. So because, the way we based our budgets is all on projections. And we know that sometimes the economy doesn't always perform the way we want it to. But we make our plans, the neighborhood improvement program will be operating and making recommendations for projects and we'd enter into contracts based on a specific dollar value. But if those revenues aren't received, anything in excess of that would come out of the general fund. And one way to make sure that we never exceed the costs of the TOT that we receive is to say, okay, we can't allocate those funds until after the close of the fiscal year. And that's just a minor change. It's only a few months, just to make sure we know exactly how much money we have. We could present, we could also say, instead of post of fiscal, close of the fiscal year could be post-audit, but that's several months. So we thought after the close of the fiscal year, you know how much has been received, then you can accurately allocate 100% of those funds. So with that, I would love to, I'm here for any questions. If you want to ask about operations, I'd love to hear your suggestions for the program as well as what the public has to say and how we can improve it.
Any questions from the dice? Councilmember Kispersky.
Thanks for the presentation, Leslie. It was very detailed and I appreciated it. You mentioned we are beginning to enforce now. What is the process by which somebody who is running an illegal short-term rental now receives feedback from the city?
So the first step is we would send them a compliance letter saying, hey, we have evidence that you're operating a short-term rental. By the way, your evidence is attached, so we have evidence of that. And say, you need to come into compliance. Here's the process. Oh, by the way, I've also included an application for you, or you can go online and we'll explain the process. And you have 14 days to come in and apply for your license. If you don't, the penalty is $1,000 a day for every day we catch you. So that's the first letter. Two weeks later, we verify whether they're still advertising, because this lovely program that we have will tell us every day, it scans all the different short-term rental sites and it tells us who is and who is not operating. They even have picture verifications and everything. So then they will get a second letter that says, this is your last chance. You have five days after this. We forward it to the city attorney and the city attorney starts her litigation enforcement.
Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you, Ms. Milton. I agree, it's very thorough. You said there were 27 applications in the process. Are all of those applications from people who were operating short-term rentals on or before April 10th, 2018?
Yes.
And so we've not, do you, to your knowledge, have we had people apply who were operating after that date and we've told them, sorry, these are the rules?
So there was a little bit of confusion recently and we do have four people who have licenses for hosted short-term rentals because they're have licenses for hosted short-term rentals, because there was some discrepancy in legal interpretation about if all short-term rentals were required to provide proof, or was it just the non-hosted short-term rentals were required to operate as proof. But the way the ordinance reads, and then the city attorney can confirm this with me, it does say that all operating short-term rentals, does not delineate hosted or non-hosted, needs to have been in, operating prior to April 10th. And if the city council, if that's not the intent of the ordinance, we can modify that at this time as well, but that is how the ordinance reads.
You know, I didn't have the benefit of asking you before the meeting, so I appreciate if you don't know. Are any, do you know with any of the 27 pending applications, if they've been pending since the beginning, or are they all relatively new? Is, is one of these 27, to your knowledge, a 14-month-long application?
Yes.
Okay. So then, to your, your recommendations, it seems appropriate that we might incentivize them to get across the finish line. You talked about the inspections, the complaints, and the enforcement. I understand that before we subscribed to the full suite of, of tools with the software package, that it was hard for the various departments within the city or divisions to coordinate on a unified enforcement path. And, do I understand now that the software is sort of a de facto program manager, in that it can see all the different things that we need? And of course, we still need that employee to activate those things, but it can be more, be, be more easily tracked, and it does, it removes that sort of disconnect that was encumber, or, frustrating our efforts before?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So then, you don't think then that we should be looking at some sort of outside, you know, contract with a person or firm to run this program? You think that now that we have the software, that we can just, that was the missing piece of the puzzle, that now that we have that, we'll be fine?
I do. I also think there was communication breakdown on a staff level. And now that we've reestablished those connections and expectations, and I think it will function a little bit more efficiently. So, as we go into the enforcement stage, there will be an increased workload for a short period of time. But then, once people understand that we are actively enforcing, once everyone is through the application process, I don't see the program needing a full-time person at this point.
Okay. And just a couple more questions. From the last slide where you showed the total program budget and revenue, it looks like our, our net revenue is about $58,000. Does that sound about right to you? It's about $133,000 across the program staff and inspection costs and, oh, I'm sorry, inspection revenues, revenue.
No, 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 no. No, it looks like it's about 90, it's about $95,000 for program operations. The 23,000, or 27,000 are revenues.
Yeah, I missed that word, revenue. Thank you. So about, let's see here, 32 and 72. So about 104, 105, and then the remaining 85 or so is revenue.
Correct.
So, it looks like this program is costing about half of what we, about half of what we're collecting, 40%. But the way that the ordinance is written now is that we are not billing ourselves to run the program from the revenue?
That is correct.
That's strange to me, because I, you know, I, like many of the people in the audience, I was a participant from the chamber in a lot of these conversations. And, it was my understanding all along that the revenue would be program, or the program would be revenue-neutral, that it would pay for itself, the city wouldn't pay a dime, and this would be a program that would be wholly self-sufficient, and the net would get split 50-50 between parks and affordable housing.
And that's the key word. The word "net" is not included in the ordinance. Therefore, we could not process that in the budget.
Okay.
It says "total revenue." It doesn't say "total net revenue" after expenditures.
Okay. Well, that's an easy fix, just amend the ordinance, so we'll clean that up. How do we put, pick 45 days for the application life?
So, we looked at the process of what an average applicant was taking. And we looked, and I, and I went excessively over the inspection process with the inspector. And he explained to me that, so, the application form is available online, and it's available to the applicant when they apply. He, they fill out the self-checklist, so they already know what those regulations are, and they've signed their name on the bottom, so they should understand what the regulations are. He then calls them on the phone and walks through each one of them, explaining the details of the ones that trip most people up. And says, okay, again, are you sure that you've done all of this? And then, he'll go out and do a site visit. So, these people, we've, we've been helping them through the process. And if you are really paying attention to the checklist, and you have truly accurately said, yes, I've, I've done this, and you have done this, the majority of the time, and the majority of people can get through within 45 days. There was someone who got through in three days. So, sometimes there are scheduling issues to make sure the inspector can comply, or can be out there at a convenient time for the operator, unless there are excessive corrections that are made. And here's a clarification in the ordinance. The ordinance was built to be inconsistent, or be consistent with the California Building Code standards and the Fire Code standards. And there is a provision in there that says, you also, all facilities need to be in compliance with appropriate land use and building licenses. So, everything that's on that inspection sheet isn't necessarily the entirety of what is required. If an inspector walks into your house and says, oh, I see that you have this issue, this is not permitted, and this is a health and safety issue, that has to be corrected. It can be, they didn't get a permit for the water heater. That's an easy fix. Go get a permit for the water heater. But that wasn't listed on the check sheet. So, sometimes it goes a little bit longer. That's the kind of thing. Sometimes there's more excessive ones. Sometimes there are very minimal, like you need to move your fire extinguisher closer to the door.
So, just to summarize that, do I understand correctly that there's a list of, of items that need to be verified as in compliance, for the purposes of operating a short-term rental, but as far as maintaining a habitable structure, not all of those things, like a one-hour fire rating on the water heater door, or that you don't have a cracked electrical plate cover over an outlet? Those sorts of things that are part of the building code, they're not necessarily on the checklist to get a short-term rental permit, but they're still required nonetheless. And so those sort of things that people don't plan ahead for, because if they do their homework and they look at the list, it's not on there, but it's still a requirement that might come up.
Yeah. And so, some of those things, we have not been holding up. Like, if it was a cracked outlet cover, we wouldn't hold up the application for that. If there was a health and safety issue, we would pause the application, pass it over to code enforcement, and put pause on it. Otherwise, we would say, please correct that. We'll let you keep going through.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Counsel member Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Milton. So, yeah, I, my understanding as well was this, this program essentially is supposed to be self-sufficient. But, but my memory is, that was independent of the TOT. It was through fees and penalties. So, for example, the cost of enforcement would be taken up by the, would be paid for by penalties. So, just to dive into that a little bit, you say, for example, if, if we put a time limit on the application fee as an incentive, the, the applicant would have to re, you know, start, start over. I mean, not paperwork-wise necessarily. If they, if they're halfway done, they still, they have, they're halfway done. But, as far as we know, the applicant costs are only the, well, they would lose their business license too, and so that would be...
No, that one would not.
So, the only extra fee would be the inspection fee, the 271, which essentially goes all to the, the inspector. I mean, more than, obviously, he's been probably trying to work on it and making the phone calls and spending staff time on it already. I just, I don't see that as being a, a windfall for the, I mean, basically, a way of, of paying for these costs. And then, but let's go to the penalty part, because if, if our city attorney is spending time sending out letters and suchlike, and such, and I know it's kind of the concept has floated, well, who should actually pay for that time? It shouldn't be the short-term rental people who are actually doing everything right. It should probably be the people who are not doing it right. Do you see an actual revenue stream coming in from that? Is that, ultimately, will we start to get this? Because there's, there's a huge deficit here, obviously.
Yes, I do believe we will start to get that. And just going back to your last part, adding, that's why the recommendation says you could consider adding a permit fee. If you're going to make the process be limited to 45 days, you would have to have some sort of permit fee too. And then, there could be a late fee. So those are just fees that you can add onto it, which is fine. But, going to the, what I was considering, is you modify your ordinance to say you can allow the use of up to 10% TOT revenues. Because if we do have a year where we have significant enforcement revenues, then we wouldn't need to use the TOT. And I think it would just be one way that you, and, and I think it would be wise to limit it to a specific percentage, so it's not just, oh, we had excessive staff costs this year, we're just going to take it all. I think it, you know, just to preserve what you guys were trying to do for neighborhood benefit. So, I think, but I do think...
Yeah, I'm, okay. I'm, I'm just still seeing a pretty major deficit here. So, so that, that is a concern of mine. And then, I'm just trying to imagine if we, so as far as the business license, the pending applications have all paid the business license already?
Yes.
And there is no, say, 1% business tax that's on top of the, the TOT? I'm just trying to figure out where, where the, you know, the, the revenue could come from, except for, from the, the TOT.
Well, I think also, we've had a little bit of more excessive cost as you get a program started. And I think we are going to have a lot of enforcement revenue when we start doing the enforcement, because currently, we have, the last report I ran said we had 50 unregistered, unlicensed people operating that we have started enforcement on. We have 16 that are still soliciting while operating. So I think there will be some revenue from that. But I would hate to bank a program on the enforcement, because that, it's never good to budget based on fees and fines, or based on fines. It's, we're, we're more of a, we want to be a business-friendly community.
I agree.
And I, and I do think, once we start our enforcement, and people know that we mean business, enforcement's going to taper off. People are actually going to stop advertising, and so it's going to taper off to a minimal level. So I would hate to base our budget on that as well, for that reason.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions for now.
Before I go to the mayor, Pretz, I just want everybody to focus on asking questions, so we can move this along and get the public, and then we can talk among ourselves.
Yes.
But, Mayor Pretz.
I'm going to come back from a different direction, but you know I would. So, first of all, thank you for the hard work. It was an initial, I want to say nightmare, but it's transformed into now something that's going to be very workable and, and hopefully resident-friendly. And, so I think that's real positive. So, again, we talked in advance, so I'm not trying to be whatever. I have a little different philosophy, though, and, and this is kind of, but basically, majority of our service, be it fire, parks, police, anything we do is not, not anything. Most things that we do are not, does not pay for itself. Like, the recreation department does not, all the services they provide, the facilities, does not pay for. The parks, all the work they do. If a resident comes to talk to you about, and you're working on a revenue thing, and they come and talk to you about a complaint about a councilperson, that you don't bill for that time.
That would never happen.
I'm just saying, numerous things that we do, it doesn't pay for, because you're working during that window of time, so it's just part of the responsibility. If we give a new assignment to the recreation person, we don't bill him for that time or build a program.
Correct.
So that's my point. But the ADUs, as an example, you think if, I think it was like $190,000. Basically, $88,000 went into the, to cover the cost of the ADU. The money set aside covered that cost. So, in some ways, it offsets, as far as the public good. So, the Seaside Elementary School, we got, bought a property, and we may not have any money, so it goes to the public good, possibly. Then, my question is, and I've got a little confused, because there's a difference between hosted and non-hosted. And I, I get the numbers mixed up, and that's on me. Do we have 50, 50-something total, or do we have more like 90 or 100 total?
So I did go back and double-check all of the numbers in the applications, and I did have to go to three departments to check these numbers, which was part of the problem, which was part of the problem. So, we have 55 licensed short-term rentals, and we have 27 applications. So a total of 82 applications have been received by the city.
And is there, are some of them hosted and some of them non-hosted?
Yes. I don't have those delineation of numbers.
And then, I think, my memory tells me, and this was the city attorney, because we've, this was a long-evolving process.
Yes.
The, my memory, and this is based on Don Freeman, then, non-hosted was closed to a certain amount of people. I mean, you could, once you sign in after April, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, anyway. But then, the not, the hosted, we weren't going to close that until we closed it now, because if a person owns a house and they wanted to add another person, as long as it's within the law, the hosted was going to be open until this group came back and said, well, we have too many. But it was supposed to be open until coming back and evaluating. Does that ring a bell to somebody?
Yes, we did have those conversations. We had those several times.
Right.
But what made it into the ordinance is different, because there was a lot of discussion of, let's try it this way for the first year. And it's written into it that every year by resolution, you will modify
Right.
the number of allowable non-hosted.
Right.
But we never came back a year later and adopted the resolution.
Right.
We are a little bit later in it, because we had a challenging startup.
So today, we, not today, but sometime in the future, near future,
Yes.
we can change it, keep it the way it is, or the, keep the hosted as only so many. I mean, the non-hosted as what we ever have now, and the hosted, because the house is already there. We could increase it, keep it the way it is, keep it open, because the house is there, and they just may
Yep.
add something. That was kind of sort of the plan. Or we can cut it off now, whatever it be. There's a variety of options. Okay, thank you. The, the revolving, the problem, and I think you're absolutely right, and I think you solved the problem, but just to clarify, the revolving payment. I know some people paid their fees in October, for an example, for their, all these fees, and then they had got another bill in January to pay more fees of the same amount, and that became a area of concern. And, and pretty much unfair, not fair, and to, for the, to the person, because it wasn't prorated. But now, doing it this way, it will be, I get my hosted, as an example, and then license and permit at whatever dollar amount, then next January, I'll, I'll pay that same amount, or whatever. Again, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and I think that's, just clarifies it a lot. And then, the good neighbor per, I'm just, I won't, I'll throw, I'll save that for later. And the complaints, as you said, in, I know, a, a concern of the residents at that time was complaints. And, in reality, because there was no proof of complaints, we basically had no complaints from any of the short-term, we got, received complaints, but they didn't reach the level of any, any other neighborhood as such.
Yes.
Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is. And with every complaint we received, our code enforcement went and investigated. They went, they actually went to the site, they tried to monitor it, they contacted the 24-hour emergency person, told them about the complaint, and put them on notice. So...
Okay. And, and I'm glad that the contact person for those short-term rentals is our Assistant City, and she's going to do a great job, and she'll coordinate the, or facilitate who you should speak to. And I think we're very fortunate to have you doing that, and I really appreciate you taking the time to ensure or hope to make this work a lot better than it is. Thank you. to make this work a lot better than it is. Thank you.
Councilmember Wizard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And then I heard Mayor Protem Pacheco facilitated my next question, which is, is the cost of the Good Neighbor brochure that we are planning on printing, is that included in the program costs that you've projected on that second-to-last slide?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else have any questions, direct questions?
I understand, direct questions. So this is in regard to the ADUs. I was gonna wait to just ask this later, but it is a question. So, just for clarification's sake, our new ADU policy, does, it's pretty much, the entire thing is facilitated by the city. Do we, the water that was given, that was credited for the ADU. My question is, can a homeowner build an ADU without taking advantage of any of the incentives that the city has given? Can they just apply through normal, normal ways? If they have the water already, they have the land, can they apply for an ADU? My question is, was prohibiting the use of ADUs as STRs, will that blanket every possible ADU? Or, or is there a situation where someone on their own, without any subsidizing or facilitation of the city, like using the plans from the city and all that? Can they, if they create their own ADU and pay for it all themselves, would that be excluded? Is that the thought? Or is that even possible that someone could build an ADU under those circumstances, is my question?
I'll let the city attorney, but I think the state is, the state is not comfortable with that. That's my understanding.
Actually, the, thank you for that question. It's a very good question. The new state ADU law allows a city to preclude the use of ADUs as short-term rentals, because the purpose is to promote affordable housing. But it is a discretionary act by the city, and the city has to adopt an ordinance that would preclude the use of ADUs. And that would apply to all ADUs in the city, not just ones built under the city-sponsored program or otherwise.
Good. And that's my expectation, I think that's the council's expectation, that we would, we would not allow that. The object is to provide housing and shelter. Okay, so, is it? Good? Okay. Let me see if I, so if we adopt these enforcement mechanisms, and I, and I agree that you don't run a program geared on enforcement, I think it's a little shaky, anyway. Right? You know, going towards the law, you can't really say, hey, you know, don't. So, but my point is, if we adopt this tonight, you think that would, how soon can you guys be up and running with the enforcement? Some, letters went out already. Are those letters working? Because we're, we're not sending them to tho, those 82 people, 82 applicants, right? We're sending the people that are not, have a license, and they are not in the queue. Those 27 that are in the queue, right?
So we have six, I found 16 of them that have been operating within the last three weeks that have applied, and they are still operating, which is inconsistent with the regulations. So those 16 are going to be getting letters.
Within the 20, 20-
Within the 24, yeah, the 27, yes.
27.
Yes. So if you are operating without a license, even if you have applied, it is still against our code, and you still can be enforced upon.
The expectations, I guess, from the city is that they will, they will pay their fines before they were, would be allowed to, to, to come to compliance.
That is correct. But we tried the whole, let's get you into complaints first, and if you won't, yes, sir.
I got to ask my questions and go on out. I have a limited amount of time.
Yes, sir.
But, my understanding, and you answered it before, but it's just for me. My understanding is that non-hosted was unlimited. But you're saying in the ordinance, if you really look at the ordinance, it was a limit placed on? Not, not that we were gonna come back and review, right? But when you look at the ordinance, are you saying that non-hosted, no, I'm sorry, that hosted is limited?
Would you like to take this one, the city attorney?
Okay, the city attorney?
Yes, so as your ordinance is currently drafted, the only short-term rentals that are allowed are ones that were in existence prior to April 10th, 2018. And that's in Code Section 17.52252D. And then, in 2019 and succeeding years beyond, the city council is supposed to review the program and make the allowable number of hosted and non-hosted. So, yes, right now, you are under a, only those short-term rentals that are in existence prior to April 10th, 2018.
Okay, thank you so much. If we take money, okay, let me, before I ask that question. Someone said something about it's a deficit. I, I don't, where's the deficit in this program where we brought in so much? Where's the deficit at? I don't understand.
The deficit is the way the ordinance is written right now. We're not allowed to use any of the revenues that are coming in to offset the cost of our expenditures.
But is that a deficit?
The way that-
I don't, you know, if you, what, and you, okay, you answered it, so are you look, I don't, okay. I don't see, no, there's no answer, because she gave, I don't see the deficit. I understand what you're saying, but there's, you know, if you're not spending more than what you're bringing in, then there's no deficit. If the program's not paying for itself, then we can figure out a way to pay for it. So I just want to make sure to the community, to, you know, we're not running a deficit. Well, that's what they're saying. When you say deficit, they're saying we're losing money. Well, no, we're not losing money. It's just, we need to properly designate the money to the funds. But if, what happens if we take money out of the designated 50% for the housing fund? How does that get made whole? How do they get made whole? It's just not as short money. Okay, I just, I didn't know if you had an answer for that, but that's, that's fine. That's the answer, which is, thank you. That was an excellent presentation, that's a report. I think this gives us a fantastic baseline to start off with, to really get this program up and running. It's been a while. I'll open it up for public comment. Public comment's now open.
Hello, Mayor and City Council and everyone here. Thank you very much for this meeting, and it was a really great report. I'm Susan Bradley. I am a resident of Seaside. Several issues, I'm also the founder of the Monterey County Vacation Rental Alliance. I'm on the board, but I'm not, you know, I'm not the president at this time. I texted the president, who is Jan Lajer, while, during this conversation, and she gave me some data. That PG found that their short-term rental program costs them only 10% of what their revenues are. So I think that probably, since you've had a rough year, the last year and a half, and things are getting smoothed out, that you'll find that your costs will be lower. I have a question on how much your STR helper is costing the city? Is that listed anywhere? So I'd like to know that information. If we have 82 vacation rentals at times $271, that's $22,000. Is that being taken account for the money that's coming in? And I went through the permitting process. I had to have an inspection and found that there was everything from a hose, a hose bib that needed to be placed on my house, which I didn't even have a clue about. So there was like a very intense, very detail-oriented. The city got some more money from permits from me, too. So I'm hoping that the city will say, well, we're making some money from these 82 vacation rentals, who are paying contractors to come in, and that's more revenue for people working here. So I'd like it all to be taken in fact. On the McVra website, that's the Monterey County Vacation Rental Association, there is a link to a 2013 Monterey County impact study, an economic impact study, that shows how many jobs were brought in, how much money was brought in. Sales tax, sales tax here in Seaside's 9.25%, in Monterey, it's 8.75%. People who are renting a vacation rental here are shopping here. They're delighting in the new restaurants that we have, which I'm really excited about myself, too. Let's see. So, as far as, probably I'm guessing around $1,000 that I paid in extra fees for permits and things like that, when I went through my own short-term rental, then experience. So, the next thing is the ADUs. I'm six, almost 63 years old. I want to age in place. And what I would like to do is build an ADU in my backyard, that I can age in place in my ADU and continue using my main house as a vacation rental. Why do I want to do that? Because I figure, as I get older, I might need a wheelchair ramp. I might need a special kind of kitchen, and I can build that in my ADU. It'd be a lot more expensive to try to transform my house and put a wheelchair ramp in and all that other stuff. So I'd like to, some discussion to be made for people who are aging that want an ADU to live in for themselves and already are doing vacation rentals. On the 16 people that are gonna be, that were sent letters that aren't in compliance, I'd like to know.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Dennis Volks, Seaside, Mals Market, and also vacation rental owner. Leslie, you did a great job. I think all the stuff on there is really reasonable. The only thing that I would like to bring up is that when the, when the, the, it came up about a re-inspection fee. I'd come to the city manager, I'd come to the mayor and other people and said, you know, I just did my inspection, and two months later, I'm getting this re-inspection fee. And I would like this, you know, talked about, because at the time, it was kind of projected to me, because I asked the lady at the desk who kind of decided this, and she said, well, that's how I read the ordinance. And so I didn't know if your department had, were making the decisions, or if the council was making the decisions. I asked the city manager, he said he'd get back to me, I talked with the mayor a little bit. They said they'd get back to me, then I asked if it could be put on the agenda, and finally, it's on the agenda tonight. So I would kind of wish that this would have been put back on the agenda, you know, three or four months ago. As of yet, I haven't really paid for the re-inspection fee, because I was kind of waiting for an answer. So this is kind of clearing it up, that it is fair, that it should be once a year, and not, you know, just broken up to where you just did it, now we're gonna go to the fiscal year. So I'm kind of happy with that. But just one thing, is as these costs are occurring, I think that, that, you know, most of us that have, have done the inspection and, and not had any glitches that we had to do. He came that day, he gave us our thing, said everything was great. I, I'm kind of hoping that if you, if you want to charge a fee, you know, every year, to, to, instead of calling inspection fee, kind of re-up fee or whatever, I, I think that maybe you might consider doing an inspection every three years, and then keeping that $271,000, $270 or $300, if you want to go to 300, just to pay for some of these expenses that we're talking about. Because to add another, you know, another, as, as we talked about, or Leslie talked about, adding another permit cost, I think it kind of gets to where, is this tax upon taxation? Is it, is it something that, you know, we pay a business license fee, there is a percentage. If you go over $50,000 of, of money you collect, then you do pay a percentage, too. So there's a standard fee, and then there's a percentage of your business, I think. You could correct me if I'm wrong. And then, and then now we're talking about another fee. So I, I think we need to really kind of gear that in, because, like I say, it was expensive getting it going, it is going. And I was kind of hoping that after this all gets settled, that the city could see that there is a little bit of money coming in, and that maybe we can add a few more Airbnbs on. Just a suggestion.
Thank you so much.
I just wish that, that we could be part of this conversation before, like if Leslie would just gave us a call.
Good evening, Council. My name's Clay Grunkie. I live across the street. One of the questions I have, kind of has to go with, you know, kind of business-friendly mentality. And, so I purchased my home, I was in escrow when the original meeting was on April 10th. And I got the keys to my house less than a week after that. So I was kind of in that, in that period. I'm glad to hear that the, there's no issue with crime, or, you know, noise issues, where I can definitely see some, some concern with the residents at that time, or people that are just buying houses for, just to rent them out and live somewhere else. I guess one of my questions is, is it possible for us to take a look at opening up the pool for that, for the amount of people who can actually do those short-term rentals? Like, if there's a certain amount of time that you could consider that someone is vested in the community, if they actually could show proof of residence beyond a certain amount of time? Personally, I'm not interested in renting out my house all the time. I'm interested in two to three times a year, when I want to take my, my family out for vacation. That'd be a great time for essentially my house to pay for my family to go trip, and then I can reinvest that money back in the Seaside. So I would just like to ask that for consideration, as you guys go about that. And there's, there's the kind of weird, I've heard weird rules about, you know, you could advertise for like, beyond 30 days, it could dense it down, because it's like a month. So if you do less, it's really convoluted, and being a part of the government, I, I, like, there's a bunch of rules that I don't want to cross red tape, and I want to be legal, I want to do things right. I just want the opportunity to do that. I don't mind paying a permit fee, whatever that looks like, inspection fee, I have no problem with that. Whatever that looks like to, again, drive in some additional review for the community. Thank you for your time.
Anthony Tereshal, own a property here. I don't have an STR, but I've been very experienced with the program in another city. And I want to commend the city of Seaside for having a really good program. And one of the things I would say, the changes that you're instituting look really good. One question you should ask when you're looking at that proportion of your income to your expenses, is which of those costs are startup costs, and which are scalable? Which of those costs are gonna increase because you get more STRs? And which would actually stay the same, even if you get more STRs? And then, to contextualize, I want to say something, and that's, there's $2 million in transient occupancy tax, and $20 million in owner revenue, and $20 to $40 million in visitor spending that's looking for a new home. That's what Pacific Grove has been getting, and won't be getting in the future. So, when you see that $191,000 as your revenue for a fiscal year, you should be setting your sights on a much higher figure. Because when people are looking for an STR, they're, they're saying, I'm gonna come to the Monterey Aquarium. And they say, oh, let's look at Monterey, or Pacific Grove. What comes up when they're on one of those sites is properties in Seaside, properties in Monterey, if they're illegal, and properties in PG, and soon, there won't be ones in PG. So, all those people that have been staying in STRs in PG want to stay here. And it's $2 million in TOT revenue the last year. And that's $20 million in your citizens getting rental income. And some of the tourist studies that they've done show that people spend from one to two times as much as what they've spent on staying in your local economy. And if they're staying in Seaside, they'll be eating in your restaurants. And so it's helping your business owners. And so, I would like to get a license here. I rented before the April date, but not on a platform, so I can't prove it. I rented until the licensing program came in. I paid my TOT, which was refunded to me. I was 5% of what got paid in with just one house. And I've been a good actor ever since. I haven't rented an STR when it's illegal. So when I see that other people are doing that, it kind of makes me mad, because I would like to have a license. And I'm a good actor. like to have a license and I'm a good actor and I did it right. And so I've been renting 30 days or longer. I've had people that were moving into the area and they needed a place to stay and rent it for three months. So please, expand your program so you can get that $2 million in revenue. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and Council, my name is Joy Colangelo and I am one of those people from PG that's losing their STR. But I wanted to say I've had the auspicious pleasure of reading almost every ordinance in the United States. And this is one of the better ones. I want to congratulate you. Insonita is almost edging you out. And I've read every lawsuit as well, and this is almost litigious proof, except for in your language when you call this a business, that every Supreme Court of the United States that has been brought these STRs to their Supreme Court, and there's 13 states that have deemed that this is a residential and not a business use. So I would just change your language and you'll be pretty litigious proof because we do sue. I'd like to say, too, that the other little sticky part you have is mandating these inspections. Now, every city does, but when it does get to the Supreme Courts and some Superior Courts, that is ruled over each because since it's a residential use and it's a rental, they are linked not to businesses but to long-term rentals, which we do not do inspections on. So to be super, uber legal, you would have to do random inspections on long-term renters, too, and find that hose bib that's, that's not up and running. So the inspections should be, to be litigious proof, you should be, they should be narrowed and they should be just a, what do you call it, almost a ministerial duty that is done by the owner and not borne out of your office. And it shouldn't have that much of a price tag on it. And it should also be every two to three years. Then I wanted to say that I pay property taxes on three homes in Pacific Grove at, and at about six, $8,000 a year. My short-term rental brings in TOT, it's a one-bedroom, and it brings in TOT of $10,000 a year. So dollar for dollar, your, your tourists are paying more for your infrastructure by using it one day than I am with my entire family using it a year. So I just wanted to say, also, I wanted to say you should open enrollment because what cities find is that 1% of their housing usually goes to STRs and caps out. It's just an organic, internal thing that happens to, not every owner wants to do this. And the cities that have more of their housing go to it only cap out at 3% of their homes. So I would open enrollment, get your fair TOT, and you'll be one of the best ordinances in this, in the nation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Don Prescott. I've been resident at Seaside for a long time. I'd like to second what the previous speaker just said. There was a tremendous number of questions, comments, and presentations tonight. This is, this is really great city action. Clearly, there's been some growing pains to the start of the program. That net, the definition of the net revenue needs to get fixed. And I think the revenues, you know, the sky's the limit on those. I mean, I think we've had, in the staff report, it says 145,000 or plus in the last six months. So I think, you know, 300,000 is clearly within reach. And there's this issue with the number of currently illegally operating, some of which we're knowing about because of the program. I'm sure others are happening that we don't know about. And that's my main concern of this whole program is all the programs that are operating that are illegal. Hopefully, the program is going to be catching those because it's just lost revenue. I have legal ones in my immediate neighborhood that are working without any problem whatsoever. In fact, they took the worst houses on the neighborhood, improved them, and are now having STRs operating to the benefit of the neighborhood. Although there's one, I'm not sure was on that list, so I'll, I'll get with Leslie on that. But it's clearly a good program that can be expanded well beyond the cutoff of 2018. I think that's, I think that's another problem that needs to get fixed. And the other comment I would make is supporting the existing ADUs to be allowed is to be part of the STR program. You know, we used to use the word granny unit. There's a lot of them in seaside. And for those of us who are getting older and looking to downsize, that is exactly the kind of scenario that I think would be very appropriate. Good job. Thank you very much.
Public comment remains open. Seeing no one else, public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dice. City manager, did you hear anything? Any questions or concerns that you can answer?
Well, I heard a lot of input. I only wrote one actual question, which was, what was the cost of the STR helper? And I presume our assistant city manager knows the answer to that.
Thank you. That was the one question I was waiting to answer. Yeah, the cost of the program is $23,500. And so that is far for the amount of facilitation that is going to... Oh, that's annually. Excuse me, $23,500 annually. But for the benefit that it's going to do, it's going to eliminate the need for another full-time position. So it seems very cost-effective. And I do, one thing I did fail to mention is, we have seen an increase, we recognize the impact to our community that these short-term rentals are providing, bringing people into our community. They are spending dollars in the community. They are hiring local contractors. They are improving their homes and their neighborhoods. We are seeing this benefit. Like Mr. Prescott just said, people are improving their houses on their streets. So those are things that we have shown, they're intangible benefits to the neighborhood compatibility. So we want to thank all the operators for that.
Okay. All right, bringing it back to the dice. What is the, what is the thoughts? We can go, I guess we can go one by one. Do you guys want to put your thoughts on the table first before we tackle each recommendation? Anybody have any thoughts before we start on the recommendations and see if we can get some direction for staff?
I guess like Jason?
Yeah, just go ahead. Yeah.
Yeah, just, just my thoughts is just to review that, why I supported this, this short-term rental in the, you know, in the past was to, was with full recognition that it, it displaces or eliminates housing which could otherwise be used for residents. And, and just so, to be clear, that is why I insisted on the linkage of the TOT going towards the Affordable Housing Fund. So I just, I just want to remind everyone that that was why I supported this in the first place. And I, and, and so that's, that's where I'm coming from. And then I can go through each individual idea all at once when, when the mayor would like.
Okay. Anybody else want to take, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarifying question. If, so as it stands today, we require people to, to get on our timeline for the inspections. I don't know, I get confused if that was January or July, but either way, it's, it's our timeline. So if you did it one day before, we would make you redo it the next day so that you were on our timeline for the inspection program, if I'm understanding the presentation correctly.
That's currently now.
Right. And we're going to talk about whether we want to change that. Before we get there, my question is, if somebody, if somebody is choosing to hold off on re-inspection, anticipating or desiring a change to the program, does that person unknowingly or unintentionally enter into a place where the city might revoke or suspend their permit because they're out of compliance?
I would, I would expect that staff and the person overseeing that, that person fall in a gray area where we want to promote them to apply for the application.
Yeah, my, thank you. My point is not to penalize somebody. I just want to make sure that a compliant, good neighbor, so to speak, is not inadvertently getting themselves into a bad circumstance by hoping that we get through at a certain period of time. And perhaps, I don't, I can't see the future, perhaps this comes back February 6th, perhaps it comes back in May. And I just don't want to have a negative consequence for somebody who's trying to do the right thing, hoping that the rules change sooner than later.
We don't know when it's going to come back. Depends on what some of the things we decide. But no, I'm saying that gray area, I think staff understands that that person is trying to be compliant and will do the right thing. All right. Anyone else?
Just some questions, I think. I hope, on the, the deficit, as you would call it, and I don't call it that way, but as far as expenditures, and you mentioned it really well and some of the residents did as well. The money raised when they go to restaurants doesn't get credited to it. You, and then you mentioned the idea, and I could be wrong, that contractors do like the house cleaning, they get paid, all those things. Potential buying of a car, whatever it be, does not get credited to the good of the expenses and nor does, and they're also, you're paying, I don't know how much it costs, but we're also paying for the booklet to give for the good neighbor booklet. That's included in the cost. That may, maybe, I don't know. But is that a true statement, I guess, that all its potential good things that are, brings back, i.e. taxes or sales taxes and all those things, doesn't get credited to the good because we don't know what those are? Whenever they go to Angelino's or wherever, we just have no clue.
Those are intangible benefits to our community.
Right.
But not directly to the city budget. Correct.
But it goes to the sales tax in turn, the five-by-a-donut, and I'm going to Airbnb, the tax on the donut doesn't, it comes back to the city.
Yes.
Right. Okay. And, and I think that's important because if you add all those dollars up, we don't know what those dollars are. But if there's 100,000 people that use these things, that's obviously a lot of dollars that comes back. And then part of our job tonight or whenever is to define what the, we know what the hosted and the non-hosted is, but I don't, it seemed like it was thrown in one box rather than separating. And I know the intention of Mr. Freeman was, because if I have a four-bedroom house and at one time, it's my house, I'm living there, and I have two AirBnBs, and I have a third room that I was using for a study room, and I choose to turn that into an Airbnb, it didn't have any impact on the house in general because the house is still there. And, and that was a concern of his at that time. Does that sound familiar to you? In that conversation of that?
I do recall those conversations. I also recall him saying that we are going to start it one way and we will come back and revise it.
And reevaluate. Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, I think that's fine. And then we go by point by point, we'll, we'll discuss that. Thank you so much.
All right, so we'll just start at number one and prohibit the use of ADUs as short-term rentals. Yeah, anybody, is there any support for that? I mean, the staff, we're going to, we're going to assume that we support staff recommendation until it's enough direction that we don't. So staff is recommending that we do not allow short-term rentals as SDRs. So anybody against that? Yeah, if you're okay.
Oh, it's basically a question for clarification. Yeah, basically, I support that, but there was some mention as to whether the owner could move into the ADU and then rent their main house. And it's, and I would support the ability of the owner to do that.
Is there, right, but it's still an ADU. So is there any other support for ADU being used as a short-term rental at this time? My, my concern is, you know, we're, we're here, we want to get, we want to get a program first. And, and to start off by the first thing saying that any homeowner can put ADU in the back and then start a short-term rental, then where are we at with that? Right, at this time? You know, if we change it, we can always modernize the, the program. But right now, we're talking about, if we're encouraging people to put ADUs in their back, are we saying we're going to allow them to do short-term rentals? So I don't support that at this time. Anyone else for direction? Okay, so staff has directions. Allow property managers to apply. They want the property managers to apply. Anybody against that? You know, any concerns or whatever you guys may have?
Mr. Mayor, I was just curious, are we talking about like, I guess I would just look for more clarity on, on how a property manager is defined?
I had the same concern.
Yeah, I just, just to tighten up my understanding of it. I mean, is it, are we talking about like, you know, I work for Creative Property Management and there's 10 vacant homes that I'm responsible for renting out and there's evidence they were short-term rentals before April 10th? And so now I'm going to make them un-hosted and I, as the employee of Creative Property, can go obtain the permit? Or I just want to make sure I'm, I'm clear on how that's...
Our uniform, universe is the 82. 82. That's all we're talking about. If you're not in that 82, then, then you're outside. You're, you're operating illegally. So we're not adding any, anybody that's not in the 82. So when I'm thinking about it, I, you know, I think the community needs the owners to make sure that the non-hosted is being responsible. And so when I think about the management, you know, some people, the non-hosted, they have a manager, and it could be one unit, right? Or someone can have a management team doing two units. I, I don't know. That doesn't make a difference. But the further you get away from that homeowner, the easier it is for abuses to take hold. So I'm not necessarily against it, but how close can we make sure the owner is responsible? And maybe the management team is very responsible. I'm just, but that's what we have to look for. That's why we do, we have the regulations about non-hosted, which is, hey, we want to be able to call the owner of the property to, you know, so-called hold them responsible. But now if we had to do the management team, some management, you know, some owners never talk to their management team, as long as the check clears, you know, every quarter or whatever they get sent in. So we had to think about that. But, but if it makes it, if it makes it easier for our program, then those are my just concerns. I'm not against it.
And I'm going with my memory. I think the, the owner should be the same. I think they had to be within reachable within an hour or 45 or 30 minutes was, it was a very narrow timeframe. And I don't remember the timeframe, but it was short. They couldn't be a property manager in Lake Tahoe. It was a very narrow window.
If we do that, the property manager will be, what is it, held to same standard within an hour.
And then on the, and you just mentioned the, the hosted versus keeping it at the 80, 88 or 82, is that, is that how we're going to, I'm fine either.
No, no, this doesn't cover.
Okay.
You know, it's, if a hosted person wants to have a management, a management team do that, then that's fine.
Okay.
Because hosted, the person is there, so that's better for us. But it's really talking about maybe a non-hosted.
Right.
So it's, do we want, do we think it's okay to have them have a management team? Let's not make it all complicated. Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I might have projected my own interpretation onto the question and then colored the question. And by that, I mean, you know, in a more basic, a reading of the question says, allow property managers to apply. Doesn't necessarily say allow property managers to manage, it says allow them to apply. So do we still hold the owner responsible? We let the property manager submit paperwork just to facilitate the paperwork? Or are we allowing the property manager to be the responsible party on the application?
Yeah. If they're in the 82, that's, that's, I, you know, if they're in the 82 and the homeowner has that management team, then the homeowner's responsible. I'm sure the management team, you know, if there's loud noise or something, trash in the yard, you call the property manager, they still should come over there within an hour. Nothing of that changes. It's just, I agree with you, can they apply to do the technical paperwork? And I don't have any problems with that. All right, Councilmember Wizard?
Campbell, yes. The...
Councilmember Campbell, I apologize.
That's, no, that's quite all right. Yeah, I'm just used to seeing the, the term or agent, you know, and just basically, you know, some, some property owners really can't, don't have the time to, you know, they might be on vacation, whatever. But so, so, you know, an agent seems like perfectly reasonable without giving up any of the, the obligations. Ultimately, the property owner is... the obligations, ultimately, the property owner is responsible, and actually with an agent, the agent also becomes responsible, so you end up kinda having two people responsible, so I'm, I'm kind of, uh.
So you're okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yes.
All right, so the, the term is manager, the agent is the manager, we just, uh, semantics, but anybody have any problems with allowing property managers to apply as they represents the eighty-two? Okay, uh, limit application process to forty-five days, anybody have any problems with that? And the repercussions that go with that, starting all over? No problems? Okay, changes to rolling application cycle non-renewals should incur late penalties, anybody have any problem with that? Which is, uh, making it a yearly thing, not necessarily on the fiscal year? And of course, uh, uh, late fees, late penalties. Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Um, yeah, I'd be fine with that, I'd also be open to the staff considering just, uh, prorating it, if that makes it, uh, easier, whichever is an easier, more manageable. But that's, that's, I'm open to that idea.
That's, that's what we're trying to get away from.
I'm sorry, prorating meaning, if they, if they pay with one day left as the, as the example that was used, then they would, they would be prorated, the three-hundred-and-sixty-four days.
That's the problem now, that you can pay your money sixty days before the end of the year, and prorating still means you start on the beginning of the year. So, we just, we're year to year, year to year, you know, if you apply in October, you're three-hundred-and-something, uh, two-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars is good for a year. That's my understanding of the request. Is that my understand, is the, I'm, okay, all right, uh, Councilmember Wizard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, do I understand correctly that the software package, I forget the name of it, STR or something, the software package will, will do that tracking on our behalf, it will, you know, flag or send us a notice or a notification that, you know, STR number thirty-three, uh, is thirty days away from the renewal period or something, and then we can submit that paperwork, or you know, ping their account, or whatever it might be, that the program will do that tracking and management?
And it will do the notification to the applicant, yes, and we do not have to do that any longer, staff does not. And they can log in at any time and look at the status of when their renewal is due.
Sounds like this is a wonderful staff recommendation.
It is, it is, and then, and then, you know, that means all of them are not due on the same day, or that, and everybody coming in on that same week. Uh, but it was mentioned, um, you know, a couple, I, I think we need to look into a couple of things where, um, as it relates to a license and paying the money, uh, someone said instead of, uh, adding another fee somewhere else, maybe the business license go up to three-hundred dollars or, or something, I, you know, instead of just adding fees, what can one fee cover, uh, the appropriate amount? And then, um, it was also, uh, 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 someone talked about how wonderful our program is, which is, I, I think is true, and I do think we have one of the best ones in the country, uh, cause Mr. Freeman put it together. But I, I, I did find it interesting that they said maybe little tweaks may work for us a little bit better, as relates to, uh, business. Uh, uh, instead of, uh, was it residential, I think they said, you know, if we could just research that, change some of the language if appropriate. Uh, and then the, uh, inspection, we, I wasn't up here, but we talked about, uh, maybe possibly having the owner, uh, be accountable for the inspection. And so I would ask the city attorney to look into, uh, you know, the liability of allowing them to do that, and uh, uh, take some of, some of the strain off on, on us, and liability, because the enforcement person is responsible. So when we, when we bring that back, um, if everybody's okay with that, then I would, we'll move on.
Just through the mayor real quick.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Uh, you're, to your point of, um, having the owner do that, I believe, uh, Pacific Grove does that. And, uh, it, it, it saves some costs on the, on the backend or the frontend for staffing. Uh, so that, I'm just saying that's, it seems to work well, and, uh, so that should be something that's considered, and was considered back in the day, a year ago.
Yeah, we, you know, we'll, we'll consider that, um, it, it makes sense. So make the program fiscally sustainable, uh, we talked about, um, you know, normally what we do, we try to make sure, uh, not necessarily the program pays for itself, that's, that's not the requirement, but we do have a funding, uh, what is it, um, what is it, a budgetary model where we account for staff time doing all these different things, that's what we have internally, so that's what we're trying to capture. Not necessarily the program pays for itself, but this money is coming in, so, uh, according to the budgetary model we've been using is, can we designate some of that money towards the cost of the program? And I understand that to be roughly about seventy-three, seventy-five thousand dollars, it, it ebbs and it flows. So how do we get to, do we take, cover the whole seven, do we cover the whole program? You know, and at the end of the year, what's left goes fifty-fifty to the, the net goes fifty-fifty to the, uh, to the two entities? Uh, that's the, uh, that's the question.
Just on my opinion on that?
Yeah.
And is that the staff, back when the economy was down, we gave money to, um, for staffing, was paid by the federal government, urban renewal. And then, it was a lot of staffing and staff, there was no money coming into the city, and staff was always preparing to do the work, but they never did the work because there was no development happening. My concern is people, the staff is already here. The staff is already working, and so unless we are consistent that if we start a new recreation department, or we start a program, like we start a new park, and the maintenance of that covers itself, then it would make sense, but the staff is here already doing what the job does, and they constantly get added new assignments. This is not, uh, this is consistent, staff continually gets new assignments, probably on a daily basis, that is not accounted for as return of dollars. It, it's not abnormal. You're, with the money that is received, and I'll use this as an example, it basically paid, if that money was to go into that affordable accounting, that affordable housing unit, the ADU, it covered, it will cover that cost potentially for another one. If we need to, we don't have the money in our parks budget, or putting new lights in the streets, and that's recommended over there, and if we don't have money in our budget, and it's recommended, it will cover the cost there. So instead of, I call it, and it's just my philosophy, it's basically double, double taxation, because staff is here, they're already working, and now you're gonna pay them back, but you don't do it in the other programs, where the money collected can go back to the community, i.e., as you pointed out, you, we, we both fought for the affordable housing as well as neighborhood improvement, so that way the residents will see the benefit of their good work, of their contribution, and the the Airbnb owners will keep their places up fine and, and well, and they will see the benefit because um, the streets improved, or the sidewalk is at a two, whatever it be. So it was supposed to be a, or is still supposed to be a win-win situation where everybody benefits. So I think it's important to be consistent, so that, I'm, I think the ten percent is a good idea, I'm fine with that, or increasing it to three-hundred dollars, or a combination thereof. But if we stick, start taking away from programs to pay for itself, then we better, we need to do it across the board in everything we do, and that's not logical, and it's not fair, and it's not consistent, and it's just a real bad idea, in, in my, in my belief.
Okay. Uh, to be clear, this is consistent, it's an internal
Right.
A budgetary program that we've been using for, I don't know, twelve years I've been around this place. Uh, and all it says is, we're accounting for staff time. And it's no different from any other program that we do, so whether we take the money from the TOT and say we're using it to account for staff time working on this, or it goes in the general fund, and we still pay for staff time. So we're not saying that they're doing new work, and we're paying them directly for their work. But, uh, it's no different from, um, a project comes through here, some of this project money pays for city manager's time, the time that the city attorney works on there is divided up, it's, it's not a new thing, uh, so the question is from the TOT that comes in, will you designate, how much will you designate to, uh, uh, pay for the staff time uh, doing this program? You know, it, 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 you know, that's, it's, it it, it's one, it's what is it, what is it, half a dozen of something, and six of the other? That's really what we're talking about, but, but the standard of what we're doing is what the staff is suggesting, so. Uh, well, Councilmember Kispurski?
Yeah, I think the ten percent TOT, of the TOT, uh, revenue is going to staff time is a good idea, just because the staff would otherwise be spending their time doing something else productive for the city, so I feel like it makes sense to allocate some money, uh, to cover the costs of this stuff. I mean, I, I, I do kind of think it is s- six of one and half a dozen of the other, because in the end, it'll be allocated to some fund, and we'll use it for whatever is allowed to be used in that fund. So, you know, our revenue is good, so, but I do think, I think ten percent, if, uh, if staff is recommending that ten percent, ten percent of the TOT revenue, uh, would be an adequate amount eventually to cover or approximately cover program costs, I think that's a reasonable amount to put into that account that would serve that use.
Councilmember Wizard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, it was a very interesting conversation, it would've been wonderful to have, uh, our finance director here to help us talk about these, uh, budgeting, uh, related questions. So, you know, obviously, not all services are revenue neutral. Our fire department runs at a loss, our police department runs at a loss. Our public works department runs at a loss. We're required as a municipal corporation to offer those services, and if we don't, we have to contract out, otherwise, we're not a city. We're not required to have a recreation department, that is a service that we choose to have. Now, we as a council, our values guide us toward the benefit to the community of running such a service at a loss, but that's a choice, that's a policy decision that we've made. Programs are different, programs are components of larger services, and we can choose to make programs revenue neutral, or allow them to run at an operating loss, like a larger, you know, service, like a fire department or other public safety. So I guess my struggle with how we pay for the program is if, if this program costs a hundred-and-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars for calendar year twenty-nineteen, and we allocate zero dollars of the hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-dollar revenue, then the hundred-and-five, seven-seventy-eight comes out of the general fund to pay for this program, and how many pickup trucks and soccer balls and other general fund expenditures don't get paid for because that general fund money goes to the short-term rental program? And then, while yes, I agree neighborhood improvement is good, yes, I agree affordable housing is good, we've exchanged general fund expenditures for those two funds. As opposed to saying this program will be revenue neutral, and the net proceeds go to those other funds. So, we can do, we can account for the money however we want, but by doing it this way, we're saying whatever we were gonna buy with general fund money, new microphones for the dais, new uniform shirts for the public works employees, whatever the general fund expenditures are, those don't get purchased, because now we're less, we have a hundred-five-thousand dollars less, and the money that we would have used is instead part of this short-term rental program, and that money gets put into housing and neighborhood improvement off the top, and it can't be used for this other thing, because our ordinance separates them out. So my preference is to have all of the revenue first paid for the program, and the net proceeds go to our extra funds, that way we're not taking money away from our other services, your turnouts for firefighters, and new ballistic vests for police officers, because that's general fund money, and instead, put the net proceeds of the program into these special funds, these encumbered restricted funds, and leave the general fund alone.
Through the mayor?
Uh, hold on a second, uh, City Manager, you wanna speak for the finance director, you, you're, you're more to qualify to answer this question.
Uh, ultimately, this is a policy question, when, when.
No, I, I understand, I'm talking about our internal budgeting program.
Right, um, when my perspective on this, uh, is the same today as it was when, uh, the council that was establishing the ordinance established the ordinance, was, which was this. I was probably the least worked up about where the money was going, because it's policy. Uh, and it's, at some point, self-regulating. Uh, the council will be faced with the budget, and you'll make budget decisions as councils do, and, and we'll go from there, so long as the city is, uh, increasing and diversifying revenue sources, and being efficient and welcoming, uh, economic development within the community, we're heading in the right direction. I, I appreciate that, uh, Councilmember Wizard and Councilmember Pacheco have, um, uh, differing views on it. All staff really needs is, uh, do you want ten percent or more than that, and then we can, uh, fashion up the ordinance change for your consideration.
Okay. Through the mayor? Yeah, go ahead.
Seventy-two thousand dollars of that is staff time that are currently working. There is no, any new program we add, staff is currently working. Where you're making revenue, whatever it be, a hundred-and-eighty, a hundred-and-ninety thousand, that's gonna go back to the community. If we have this program or not, if this totally was to go away, that seventy-two thousand dollars would be still expended for them to do this job that they're already doing. Seventy-two thousand to cover the cost of five different thou, departments, if we said we're not doing Airbnb, is still coming from the general fund. That's seventy-two thousand dollars, so I could get the point, if, if we had to hire a new staff person that we weren't counting for, that would make sense. But the seventy-two thousand dollars is gonna be there like it or not, and if we're giving back to the money, we are basically, that money of raised of that hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars is being used to provide city services at, that we would not necessarily provide, which is a good thing. And if we're all that excited about ADUs and affordable housing, eighty-eight thousand dollars is being added to pride, diet, provide that service, and if you're excited about fixing your streets or fixing a park, fifty, eighty thousand dollars is being used to things that you can't afford. And the seventy-two thousand dollars is for existing staff, it's nothing new, it, it seems I see it's, and then I think, I agree with Alyssa's comment, the ten percent seems fair.
Oh, okay, uh, City Manager wanna?
And, you know, not the brightest, uh, guy on the planet, but I can count to three, uh, I've heard ten, ten, and ten.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear that, you wait to, you wait to.
Okay, I've only counted to two then, I've heard ten and ten.
He, he did, so, I thought you had something else to say, we're not there yet.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just waiting until three councilmembers give some direction.
When I, when I articulate that I understand direction, then I will indicate I have direction for you guys. My, are you, well, okay, I wanna move on, but I want, you know, people, my thing is all the money is ours, so whatever pocket it is, we have to pay all the bills, right? Uh, so I don't disagree to anybody, but our internal process is what we've been doing, so what they're asking for is nothing new, right? So I understand where they're coming from, I don't, I, you know, whether it's ten percent or it's a hundred percent. Uh, we do have to pay all the staff time, and if we say they already work here, that's fine, it goes into another bucket. If we say, well, let's pay some of that money out of these two buckets, then eventually, we're gonna look around, we're gonna say, do we wanna put more in affordable housing? That's, that's what we're shorting, we're shorting affordable housing and, um, neighborhood improvement. And, um, you know, that's, like City Manager said, that was a, that was a policy decision that was made from the dais when I was out there, people up here said fifty-fifty, so that can change. Um, but we're not shorting each other, so I'm gonna go with, uh, Council- Um, but we're not shorting each other, so I'm gonna go with uh councilmember Campbell, councilmember Wizard, and then we'll see if we have direction. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and just to uh uh address what was mentioned earlier about the the word deficit. I think I was the one who used the word deficit and uh first and and um and I was specifically referring to the shortfall in the funding of this program and I appreciate you, mayor, stepping back and looking at the big picture and saying, well, but the whole program is not running in deficit and and I totally appreciate that. Uh, so looking at this, uh making it fiscally, fiscally sustainable, I really um proceeded along the lines that we're trying to make it fiscally um sustainable by permit fees and and um and penalties. That's, I mean, essentially what every time we set permit fees for whatever, the idea is that we usually set permit fees based on actual budgeted time that it takes to to uh to run the um uh to whatever it is, I give a a dog license fee or whatever, we 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 base those numbers on allotted time. In this case, apparently, we're having a hard time making that work and I recognize that and we're still working out, trying to iron this out. I appreciate what a member of the public said, that um we also need to kind of discern what the fixed costs are versus the scalable costs and and we're still working on all of that. And for those reasons, I'm open to the idea of putting a cap of ten percent and um and and I consider that a compromise because what I believe councilmember Pacheco and I had in mind when we when we proposed our fifty percent going towards affordable housing and fifteen um fifty percent going to um neighborhood improvement is um is we wanted to sequester those funds. We didn't want to see those funds get eaten up elsewhere because we felt like there was a real linkage. And I, you know, and and yes, we, there is an internal budgeting thing going on here, but honestly, if I don't see myself getting down there and going, wait a minute, how many hours did did uh staff member X spend on this? How many hours did I'm? The the, this was just a simple way for us to get what we wanted and feel comfortable approving this this whole short-term rental, so I'm adamant that we put, that we sequester those funds for the purposes that that uh uh Mr. Pacheco and I considered and um, but I am open to the ten percent and let's revisit this in next budget cycle whenever, in in a couple of years, but I also wanna take take into account that, and I appreciate the mayor saying the eighty-two, we're talking about eighty-two, but at some point, we're probably gonna open this up and then in the future.
And don't, don't, don't say what we probably will do.
Well.
No, I'm just saying, we don't need to give expectations out there. Just, we can discuss it, but we we don't need to say probably because people will wait you out and then it'd be expectations, so.
Uh, all right, all right. Well, we're at eighty-two right now and um and considering the size of the city and and how much the city is growing, who knows what will happen.
Okay, okay.
And uh and so, so that that revenue stream may change in the future and we should revisit it then.
Okay, quickly, I'll 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 say that's when you talk about what we, this is the problem and and that's why I didn't like the sequestration, that's why I spoke for the dais, that it it may not be a good idea. Because now we're talking about last year, well, July two nineteen to December was a hundred and forty-six thousand. What do you think it will look like two years from now when these eighty-two are up and fully running? Now, that's good for, you know, going to housing, but we don't need two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or a hundred thousand dollars a year going to neighborhood improvement and then, you know, has to be spent. That's money that should become to the general fund, so we, you know, we can have it. We, I don't, I don't wanna see three hundred thousand dollars in the in the fund uh balance for uh neighborhood improvement and then they're spending it and, you know, we get the request, but my point is um we should be spending the money. The council should be spending the money. Should not be a uh committee out there spending two or three hundred thousand dollars um um because it's in their account. And then if it's not in the, then they're not spending it. We're saying, why are you not spending it? Why you got two hundred thousand dollars in the account? So, this, what I'm talking about, this is not today. We can't be looking at this every six months, every every year. We're talking about a program five years out, four years out, seventeen years out. That's what the ordinance is for. It's it's not for us to be just looking six months down the road, so. Um, that's, that's my my two cents. So, go ahead, say what you have to say and then we'll see if there's consensus on something.
Uh, just very briefly, uh, I would recall that when this council was asked to consider whether or not we wanted to stand up a homeless committee, an environmental committee, it was it was great debate about the impact to staff time and staff services. And while that seventy-two thousand dollars goes to pay for staff that are already here, that means they're not working on their actual jobs. They're working on this program. So, if it worked for this program, that seventy-two thousand dollars would be spent, but it'd be spent on the sidewalks, it'd be spent on public works, it'd be spent on parks, it'd be spent on the fire department. So, yes, we're already paying for the staff, but they're they're, though, that money pays for them to focus on short-term rentals, not focus on all the other things that are in their job description. So, we're it's, we're taking them away from those tasks to work on this program. So, that's why I think the money should go to the general fund to pay for the programs that we already have and then the rest can go to the programs that were the sequestered funds. I'm fine with the ten percent because it's better than zero, in my opinion, but I would prefer that the program be revenue neutral.
Through the mayor. No, we're gonna, Alyssa, you, you have any thoughts, uh, councilmember Kispersky, about the ten percent?
Yeah, uh, ten percent is is what I think is a good number primarily because I thought about the, just having, you know, taking whatever the costs are for the year out of the the T O T. Um, what I worry about there is, well, then you do end up hiring another staff person and then you do have lots more costs because there's sort of an unlimited fund. So, I like limiting it at ten percent and then you've got, you know, that's the amount of time and energy you're gonna spend on that program because that's what it's allocated for, presumably.
Through the mayor. No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we got consensus. You guys are at ten percent and that's and that's it.
But my.
You just won.
I know, but there was a.
Well, I wanna move on, Mayor Protim. You just, you you won.
But it's still gonna be forty-five and forty-five.
You, you just, you just won.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, allocate funds of post-close of fiscal year. Uh, pretty, well, let me take a step back with uh making a program for this uh fiscally stable. With those other caveats, where we're gonna look into some of these things about residential inspection program and the fee to two seventy-one and maybe three hundred dollars to capture those fees. That was in the consensus. All right, so allocate funds post-closing. That's just, you know, give the real numbers at the end of the year when they think they have good numbers. That make sense? Well, I mean, we had to put it in the ordinance, so, yes, go ahead.
Just, this is a suggestion. Uh, maybe use the the first quarter, by the end of the first quarter as a time to, rather than June thirtieth, after the end of the first quarter, be it September, whatever that is, that gives times to all the dollars that would come in and that way it's a dedicated timeframe. That would be a suggestion. Uh, if that would make, um, Ms. Melton, if that makes sense to you, so that way you know what the, how the dollars have been collected and it's all fiscally, you don't have to assume.
I I think, yeah, that time is towards our our fiscal year.
Right.
So, when we got the numbers for everything else, uh, then they can uh, you know, tell us officially fifty percent goes to, how much goes to homeless committee uh and how much goes to neighborhood improvement. Right now, we don't, they don't have the ability to give us the right numbers. Anybody else? All right, you good to go, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor Protim.
Just one question. Are we gonna, the eighty-two, and I'm fine either way, I really am, on the eighty-two units, are we gonna look at when this comes back, the hosted as defined as eighty-two as the max, or are we gonna look at the hosted with a more opportunities to, for lack of a better word, grow, so if I only have, you know what I'm saying? Or I'm fine either way. I just, that should be discussed, though.
No, that's, that, we did, we did miss that part.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, my, my understanding, and I was always comfortable with non-hosted as closed.
That I agree.
My understanding was hosted was unlimited. I don't know how that didn't make it into the ordinance, but uh hosted is unlimited because you can have whoever you want live in your house. I mean, you know, live in a room in your house, so it's hard for us to track that. That's, that was my understanding about not, it's hard for us to put a limit on hosted. Uh, but non-hosted was that year back.
Right.
And so, it's only fair um that the eighty-two that we designated and the twenty-seven that's in the in the queue, they need to get their stuff together because, I mean, once you fall out, uh, yeah, let me be clear, once you fall out, how many months do you think you could fall out and then come back? You know, so you can't take a six-month break from the queue, because right now it's eighteen months, it's the next, so I would just encourage people that the twenty-seven that are waiting, do what you have to do to become the compliance because the people that are doing it illegally, we, they have to be enforced. I mean, that's just, we can't allow them to operate illegally because we don't, you know, we, somehow may be unsafe, so it's not just about the money for us, it's about. All right, uh, what's your, we'll go down the row and get you guys, uh, what you, what you think about hus- hosted and not hosted. I think you said something earlier.
Well, yeah, well, I did say something earlier, but but so we're we're not talking about the um, the the non-hosted right now, but the hosted. Um, my understanding, the the limitation, the only limitation to the hosted was that inadvertent the saying, uh, I think it was April twenty fourteen, for all short-term rentals. We didn't exclude. So, it was actually a date, not a, not a, not a total number, but it was actually a date that was the exclusion. Other than that, it was there, it was open-ended, so I think we just need to clarify, if I'm, if I'm correct, that that uh, that April twenty fourteen date refers to um, non-hosted short-term rentals only and that will open up the uh, the hosted again.
That, that makes sense, yeah, okay. And, yeah, I I agree with them and um and I think we need to keep the hosted exactly the number we have for a variety of reasons to include, we gotta make sure we can manage this program effectively before we even think about increasing it, not tomorrow, three or four or five years from now, but that's a later discussion.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to clarify one thing as it relates to this hosted portion. Do I understand our earlier decision, I don't, I'm not trying to reopen, I'm just trying to clarify it, that the earlier decision was that that the hosted is not the parcel, but it's the home, so I need to live in the home for it to be hosted. I can't live in an A D U on the property and then rent out the main house. I have to live in the structure.
You have to live in the dwelling.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
That's, that's the ordinance right there and that's how they, that's how they get you, uh, even at the state level, that's how they get us if we allow it. Uh, so, uh, um, what what are your thoughts?
I'll throw in my two cents. Um, absolutely, yeah, we should not limit our hosted uh short-term rentals by that date. We should allow any applications and and I think that should we, should staff feel ready to reevaluate, I think I'd be open to reevaluating the non-hosted numbers as well, but I'll leave that up to uh.
Well, we'll, we'll take care of that right now. That's, that's not on them, so anybody, no, I'm just, I mean, no.
Let's put it this way, I would, I would support it, but only if we had the staff to do the work.
Okay, so, is there anybody else that supports uh uh opening up uh non-hosted at this time?
Considering, I believe we were supposed to to address it last July.
Well, we're addressing it right now. I mean, we're, this, okay, let me just back up. You make a good point, but.
Being, being somebody, if I'm being somebody who who was very uh reticent to even start short-term rentals in here, I I do, I I support what councilmember Kispersky says, that if staff has the bandwidth right now, whether it come, or if it comes back to us in a few months, six months, that's fine, but I'm open to address the numbers but once these applications and all that are kind of ironed out, so, thank you.
Uh, let, let, well, and that's what I wanna get to. We we just barely accepted this and we just said we were, I don't know, six, seven, eight months behind when I revealed this and the first thing we said is, once you guys do this, open it back up. But I I hear that. My only, my only point is um, we need to look farther out. Um, so let me come back to that. It didn't come earlier before because staff didn't have the bandwidth to bring it earlier before, so we apologize about them taking, you know, finally getting here, but I'm glad we took the extra month because they finally did a such a, uh, what is it, um, efficient and effective job of of laying it out, all the questions we have to make a standard program work for a year before we see if there's anything wrong with it, we need to do anything with, right? So, if it had br- if we'd have rushed it before when they were not ready, we don't know what we would have had. So, when we say it's running a little bit late and we saying, well, bring it back when you got the bandwidth, I I I'm prepared for my two cents to tell them, get this up and running and then we're not gonna worry. I'm not gonna concern myself with it for a year or two years. You know, let it, let it work, let us work. So, is there anybody uh that supports, two people that think it should come back as as soon as staff thinks so. I I think staff don't need to bring it back till we call for it. Is that you? That, okay, that's direction. Uh, we'll call for it when we, when we get ready. All right, so, let's move to closed session.
Excuse me, mayor, before we do, just twenty, twenty seconds. I just wanna um quick compliment to my um colleague here on his uh choice of ties. He has a excellent taste.
I didn't notice that. I didn't notice that. I didn't notice that and that's why you guys were agreeing down there. They were agreeing. But I sure didn't know. All right, we're going to closed session. Uh, Madam City Attorney, uh, could you read us in closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Uh, mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. The uh closed session items tonight will be a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point eight. Two items, one is the disposition of Devarte Street, A P N number zero three one zero three one zero one eight. Negotiator for the city is Craig Malin et al. and we will be discussing instructions to negotiator for price terms payment of both. Second matter is K B uh Bakewell Seaside Venture exclusive negotiating agreement, surplus to property, A P Ns, and there's a whole list there on the agenda. Um, generally in the um light fighter campus town area. Land sites, negotiator for the city is Craig Malin et al. and under negotiation is price terms or of payment or both. There will be no announcements coming out of closed session tonight.
No anticipated announcements.
Not, no, thank you. No anticipated announcements.
Okay.
And there's a second matter. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, um, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to section five four nine five six point nine one potential case. And that concludes the reading.
Thank you so much. I'll I'll now open up public comment for our closed session items. Public comment for our closed session items now open. Public comment remains open for our closed session items. I I don't know where uh councilmember Campbell went to, but uh we're still in session over here. Him and the chief, they both should know that, but. All right, public comment is closed. Uh, before we go in the back, I do want the the audience and the people in the community to acknowledge Mr. Robert Edward Constance. He did pass away and we wanna make sure that uh we recognize him and and honor him for his life and his work within the community of Seaside. I know by the time we get back, the uh cameras will be off and the feed will be off, but I wanted just to make the uh our uh program, so, thank you so much. So, thank you so much.